Good morning. The Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, regular Board of County Commissioners' meeting will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection from the first responders and members of our armed forces. Commissioner Susan Adams will deliver an invocation, and I'll have the honor of leading us in the pledge. Please rise.
Dear Lord, as we come here today, please bless us with the patience to make the decisions necessary for our community, to have the conversations that are needed, to make sure the work of our county is done, and to give us the guidance to move forward on the things that we need to do. Please bless our first responders and members of our armed forces, and please, please, dry the clouds up so we can get a little relief from the rain. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America, home of the free because of the brave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, for all. Thank you all. Good morning once again, and we'll move on to any additions, deletions to the agenda. Item 16 of B5 is a scrip nuzera duplicate, so we'll be removing that item. The previous item reflects the same. Is there anything else? County Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chair, would like to remove item 9G and item 9V. And we'll bring those back after a little further research.
9G golf, 9B boy?
Yes.
Is there anything else?
Move to approve as amended.
Second. That's a motion by Commissioner Moore, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is a presentation proclamation recognizing the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Indian River County, Florida. And we will have Vice Chairman Law to be honest of presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we have members of our IT staff here, and if they would like to join the director. I tell you, we've come a long ways, Mr. Chair, from the old Control Alt Delete days and the days when we would call IT and they would say, unplug it and plug it back in in 30 seconds. We've come a long ways, so.
In 2006, we had one or two members of IT. We now have a full complementing team.
Right. So it is my honor to read this proclamation, Mr. Chair. Recognizing the month of October 2025 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Indian River County, Florida. Whereas in 2004, through the collaborative efforts between the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Cyber Security Alliance, October was designated as National Cyber Security Awareness Month to provide Americans with resources to stay safe online and raise awareness about the importance of cybersecurity. And whereas the rapid advancement of technology continues to benefit our county, providing countless opportunities for communication, business, and innovation, yet with the increasing use of digital tools and systems comes the ever-growing risk of cyber threats, including data breaches, identity theft, and cyber attacks, which can have serious and far-reaching consequences. Whereas the 2025 campaign emphasizes building strong Level 1 cybersecurity habits, such as identifying phishing attempts, using strong authentication methods, and securing networks to help every individual establish a sound foundation online today. And whereas by working together to increase awareness of cybersecurity and cybersecurity best practices, our community can reduce risks, protect sensitive information, and promote a safer digital environment for all. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, the month of October 2025, be designated as Cyber Security Awareness Month in Indian River County, and the Board encourages all citizens to take action in improving cyber presentations. Adopted this seventh day of October 2025, and welcome to our IT. And I will tell you, IT Department, that all five of us are kindly reminded every other month or so to take cybersecurity tests, which we all take that very seriously. And you learn something every time we take those tests, so thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Just for a few words, if I may. Chairman Fletcher, Commissioners, Council, County Administrator, good morning. I'd just like to thank the team for being here this morning. As you can imagine, the effort that goes into cybersecurity and protecting our data, our assets, our network, our infrastructure, you name it, is a 24/7, 365-day operation. Without these folks here doing the heavy lifting and whatnot, we'd be pretty much vulnerable. So to your points, when it comes to cybersecurity awareness training, the whole point of this is to make sure that we educate not just our county employees, but our county as a whole. There's lots of opportunities here to make sure that we strengthen our partnerships and our relationships with third parties, including the federal, state, and local governments that surround us. But more so, we continue to push forward and do all that we can to make sure that our constituents are protected properly. And you mentioned Level 1, you know, awareness around security. We want to continue our efforts to promote cybersecurity awareness and training. We have some very creative ideas moving forward in the future that we'd like to implement, working with the county administration. So is there anything that my team would like to share? If not, I do want to recognize both of our cybersecurity IT professionals here. You have Rachel Miller, and you also have Jason Maladano. So these are the ones that really coordinate, collaborate, and get things done. So thank you all so much for this time.
Well done.
Shake hands.
Thank you.
If we can take a picture, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Bring everybody up. Bring everybody up. Come on.
That guy in the back there, he just doesn't want to. Thank you.
How you doing? What's up, fellas?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
There he is, the old timer.
Ah, he knows that.
Getting out with all these smart people. What's up, buddy? How are you?
I just think it all started with an Olivetti typewriter. Thank you. Yep. All right. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Again, a few of us have responded to quite a few domestic violence scenarios. A domestic violence case can only be met with a negative outcome, up to and including loss of relationship, loss of family, loss of family contact, serious injury, death. And when the uniform shows up, somebody's getting unexpected vacation. There is no positive outcome for any domestic violence scenario. It always is a negative. And I only hope that by presenting this proclamation, that that sinks in so that we have less domestic violence. We hope and pray for no domestic violence. But unfortunately, things happen. Distresses of life cross the paths, and the positive outcome that someone feels is necessary to commit an act of domestic violence does not exist. Well, I'd like to present this. So we'd like to come and receive this proclamation. The former local team, and we appreciate everything you do every day. This proclamation is as follows. Whereas domestic violence is a serious widespread issue that affects individuals in every community, regardless of age, race, income, or education level, and leaves a lasting impact on survivors, families, and communities. Whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced physical violence threats or abuse from intimate partner during their lifetime. Whereas lingering health and economic challenges and the continuing housing crisis have had their toll on mental health and increases in suicidal ideation and deaths, substance use, household violence, food insecurity, and more. Whereas the effects of domestic violence extend beyond the immediate harm that's caused to survivors impacting children, workplaces, health systems, and entire communities. Whereas safety, support, solidarity is the theme of the 2025 Domestic Violence Awareness Month, uniting communities nationwide and here in the Treasure Coast in standing hashtag with survivors. And whereas it is vital, recognize the importance of Safe Space work to encourage the community members, employers, faith leaders, and civic organizations to take action by raising awareness, learning the signs of abuse, and offering compassionate support to survivors. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that we recognize the October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to support Safe Space and honor the courage of survivors and commit to ending domestic violence. Duly adopted this seventh day of October 2025 and signed by all five county commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this proclamation. On behalf of, so I'm Jennifer Fox, the CEO of Safe Space. And on behalf of Safe Space and everyone standing here with me and with survivors of domestic violence, I want to thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This proclamation, I think, really does send a powerful message to survivors in our community that really says, you're not alone. Domestic abuse can be found in every neighborhood, workplace, and school, and yet survivors do feel very alone. Every statistic represents a person, a parent, child, or a neighbor who deserves to be safe in their own home. Safe Space is the only state-certified domestic violence center serving Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River County. And I just want to give a little bit of a snapshot. Our crisis hotline call is taken on average of 250 to 275 calls every month. Last year, we provided a variety of services to 891 survivors of domestic violence. 165 of those were children. 378 people stayed in our safe homes, and we provided legal advocacy and representation in court to 359 survivors in our community. So we're talking about almost 900 people. Almost 900 people that found us and 900 people that this community was able to support. So along with our theme of safety, support, and solidarity, I just wanted to remind us that everybody does have a role to play. Safety means making sure survivors have a place to turn 24 hours a day. Support means listening without judgment and connecting friends, family, and colleagues to resources. Solidarity means standing together, wearing purple, raising awareness, and ensuring survivors know this community is with them. So we want to invite the community throughout October to stand with us. Thursday, October 16th, is Purple Thursday, where we encourage everyone to wear purple. This is happening throughout the nation. To wear purple with solidarity with survivors, and you can post yourself wearing purple with the hashtag with survivors. October 17th, we will gather at the Tesoro Club in Port St. Lucie for our Amethyst Gala. This is our signature event that shines a light on survivor stories and then raises critical funds for these lifesaving services. Thursday, October 23rd, we're going to host our Day of Giving, which is a community-wide day of generosity to support survivors here on the Treasure Coast. Besides those monetary donations, we also do take in-kind donations. And we're currently in need of linens. I just wanted to highlight, a lot of times we get asked what we need. So we need brand-new bath towels and pillows, brand-new twin-size bed sheets and comforters. Those things are in really high demand. So to learn more about these events, the services we provide, or any other ways that you could help, please visit our website at safespacefl.org or follow Safe Space on social media. But thank you for using your platform to shine a light on this issue and for standing with Safe Space and with survivors. Thank you.
Thank you. And you mentioned something about helping out and the needs. Again, we keep the location under wraps, so how can people contact? There is a lot of folks out there that would like to donate. And oftentimes, we get phone calls on, how do I get to Safe Space? So can we facilitate a good contact?
Yeah, well, the website is the best place to go, but calling our administrative offices, and then they can help find advocates that can meet people who want to give donations or people can bring things right to our administrative offices, but that is in Stewart. So we usually have our outreach team help pick up donations in this county.
So somebody will come and.
Yeah, we can meet somewhere.
Pick up. Get those items that are very much needed for the mission.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Little blue X or something. All right, we have a group of minutes to cover, so we'll do them individually. Item 6A is the Budget Workshop Meetings Minutes for July 9th, 2025. Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The regular meeting minutes of July 15th, 2025. Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The continuation of the Budget Workshop Meeting for the minutes of August 11th, 2025. Second. That's a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the Special Call Comprehensive Plan Year Amendments Meeting of August 12th, 2025. Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do have a rather lengthy event calendar. I direct the public to go to the website. Actually looking up the events and activities in this county is an event in itself. It is rather robust, and thank you, team, for providing all of the great things for folks to do in Indian River County. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a couple of items that got pulled for a later date.
Approval was amended.
I'd like to pull a 9W.
Okay, well, you have to, you're going to show your approval for now? 9W? 9W whiskey. Okay. Anything else? That'd be the appropriate time.
Move approval was amended.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think it's the rain.
I think so.
Yeah. 9W whiskey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. 9W is the Human Services Rental Assistance Program. And for those not familiar with it, once a client meets all qualifications, the county pays 60% of their rent for one month, up to $1,000, once per year. And in the last four years, the amount spent on that has increased from about $80,000 to $151,000. 72% of the clients served this year were new to the program, while 28% were returning clients from the previous year. And the only comment or suggestion or hope that I have is that I would like to see the people who are first-time applicants be served first. That's all, if there's a way to do that. And I know that before COVID, it was an 18-month span. And then during COVID, it moved back to a 12-month span, and I think you're increasing it again to an 18-month. Is it possible to take first-time applicants first, given that changing span of time?
Hi, good morning. So nice to see all of you today. I'm Cindy Emerson. I oversee community services. One of the departments is human services. And yes, we have now moved to an 18-month wait before someone can apply again. If we hit the 12,500 cap for the month, for the following month, appointments will be for first come. The first-time clients will be prioritized for new appointments. So we definitely recognize that. We want to make sure our first-time clients get priority. It is on a monthly basis, so we do a roll down each month. So yes, we definitely took that into consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Cindy, can you just provide, I know we talk about this at AHAQ, but can you just provide a little background as to why we're seeing kind of this increase? Like basically what's going on with some of our partner agencies in the community when they're funding?
Yeah, unfortunately, this year, what we found is that two of our partner agencies have lost funding or have reduced funding significantly. Funding will open up in January for our partner agencies, but at this point, we're one of the only supports for people who may need rental assistance. And it is for our working residents here in Indian River County. That's part of the requirement for them to be able to receive assistance, but I can speak. One of our partner agencies lost $600,000 in preventative funding for housing. So there's definitely a growing need here in Indian River County. As you're seeing, in the last four years, we've been tapped on more and more to help support keeping people housed right here, which is just much less expensive than rehousing. So I think people, what we hear every day is just a lot of gratitude to you for what you're doing to help. you're doing to help keep our residents housed.
Yeah, thank you.
And a lot of that is the federal funding that's just not coming down, so.
Correct.
You know, being able to, to assist where we can, I think, is, is our role. So I appreciate what you guys are doing and yes, definitely prioritizing first-time applicants is, is what we're doing. And then you're not, you can't reapply for that significant amount of time.
Yeah, 18 months.
Thank you for soldiering on in this time of uncertain funding. But I, yeah, I'll move to, move to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Adams? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, if anybody wishes to speak on any agenda-related item, and you don't anticipate being here when the actual item takes place, this would be the time and opportunity, that's notwithstanding the public items. Having given ample opportunity, we'll move on. there are no constitutional and governmental agencies. We can move on to item 11 in the public items is the public hearing. And that is going to be a quasi judicial item. So we'll begin with the next item on the agenda is a request to rezone approximately 9.24 acres from A1 to Agricultural District to RM8 Multi-Family Residential District. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. The, the parties of the proceeding are the Indian River County and Laurel Homes Incorporated, also known as the applicant. Before we begin, we need to move forward and I need to ask the commissioners to disclose any ex parte communications, site visits, independent investigations. We'll begin with the left.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've known Peter and Deb Robinson since before I was elected to anything, and we go to the same church. They go more often than I do, full disclosure. But they came to me, and it was quite a while ago, with just a concept, basically, for affordable housing that they wanted to do. And I, I was really delighted because they're known as high-quality developers, they're local, they live here, they care about the community. There were no details at that time that had been formalized. There was, I didn't conduct any independent investigations and did not visit the site.
I also had a conversation about a year ago, I believe. It was very conceptual at that time. They were just kind of looking at different things. So other than that, nothing, and I believe I can still be impartial.
Somebody's got to come.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've never visited the site. I did have a conversation with the principals over a year ago.
I would say the same stuff. I have the conversation with the principals and that's as far as it went.
Well, I could say that I know the applicants about 20, 28 years. And I don't discuss quasi judicial actions. None that I recall. Thank you. I'd like to confirm that all the commissioners can have an open mind and are able to base their decision on the evidence and presented and applicable law.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will.
Cannon will. At this time, I need to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you do the honors of swearing in anybody who anticipates that they may be speaking regarding this matter?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
At this time, we'll have a presentation by county staff. Good morning, Patrick.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Patrick Murphy, Chief of Long Range Planning, here to present this rezoning PowerPoint presentation to you. I'd also like to point out in the audience is the applicant's representative engineer. Descriptions and conditions. So the area to be rezoned is approximately 9.24 acres. It's situated on the north side of 16th Street, approximately 600 feet west of 66th Avenue, and about a half a mile east of 71st Avenue. It is located south of the Central Assembly of God Church, about a half-mile west of the Indian River State College, and within one mile, the Indian River Mall to the northeast, which is all located within the State Road Corridor, State Road 60 corridor. Parcel is zone A1 Agricultural District. The applicant is requesting to rezon this property to RM8 Residential Multiple Family, which allows a maximum of eight units per acre. Purpose is to establish zoning consistent with the property's M1 Medium Density Residential 1 Future Land Use Designation. Property is bordered by RM6 zoning to the east and RM8 zoning to the west. To the south, across 16th Street, the surrounding area consists of undeveloped parcels and single-family lots, all zoned A1, while to the north, in the close proximity to the regional commercial anchors along the State Road 60 corridor. The future land use map, the subject parcel is bordered on three sides by M1 Future Land Use Designations to the northeast and west. Across 16th Street to the south is the AG1 Agricultural 1 Land Use. All the green on that map there is located outside the urban service area. On the north side of 16th Street, everything is in the urban service area. So you can see the distinction between the M1 and the AG1. So taking a look at the A1 Residential District, it's intended to provide areas for agricultural activities in a very low-density residential development. Allows for single-family residence at a maximum of one dwelling unit per five acres. A1 permits continued agricultural use, including farm and citrus groves, as well as complementary uses such as farmworker housing and specific institutional uses. And the table below you is a breakdown on the development standards. Looking at the RM8 District, it's intended to provide areas suitable for medium-density multiple-family residential development. It allows diverse residential types, including townhomes, duplexes, apartments, condominiums, and even single-family homes. RM8 traditionally serves as a transitional zoning between single-family residential neighborhoods and more intensive commercial or industrial areas. The table below shows the development standards for the RM8 District. Is the rezoning request consistent with the M1 Future Land Use Designation? Yes, the property has an M1 designation. This allows for residential development up to eight units per acre. Rezoning to RM8 remains fully consistent with this land use classification. The property is located within the County's Urban Service Area, and the site provides suitable levels of infrastructure to support medium-density multifamily development. It is positioned within the State Road 60 corridor plan area and is deemed ideal for multifamily residential uses. No future land use amendment changes proposed or required as part of this request. So all rezonings must be analyzed based on Chapter 90212-3. There are actually 11 criterion by which a rezoning is evaluated. The first of which asks if the rezoning is in conflict with any applicable portion of land development regulations. Staff found no conflicts with RM8. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Yes, we've established that. We actually evaluated objectives 1 and 2 of the future land use element, in addition to policies 1.13, 1.4, 1.43, and 2.2. All of these policies are established to promote compatible land use arrangements, and we had met the test. Consistent with existing proposed land uses? The RM8 zoning is consistent with existing M1, and no additional land uses are needed. Is it compliance with adopted county thoroughfare plan? Property is located north side of 16th Street, which is a collector roadway. It's positioned a half-mile from 71st and is in keeping with thoroughfare plan policies. Would the rezoning generate traffic which would decrease level of service standards that are adopted? The traffic analysis was evaluated by our Traffic Engineering Division and has been accepted. There was no cause for concern. It would not increase the level of service adopted. When the site plan is actually submitted and reviewed, a more intensive traffic analysis will be evaluated and look at the existing traffic patterns at that time. Is the zoning subject to change conditions that exist the warrant? This amendment, the State Road 60 corridor has experienced significant change within the Indian River Mall, Indian River State College, and adjacent RM6 and RM8 developments. They all worked to establish a more urbanized residential pattern. Overall, level of service dealing with sanitary sewer, potable water, solid waste, drainage and recreation, these will all be evaluated when an actual site plan is reviewed, but at this time, the analysis is that the applicant may be required to pay utility connection customary fees, and we will be looking at this much more intensively when the site plan is evaluated. Down below is a table that shows the breakdown of the existing allowable densities. Right now, under the A1, one unit could be developed. If this flips to RM8, this maximum of 73 units could be developed on the property. Continue on the analysis. Would the rezoning result in significant adverse impacts in the natural environment? The 9.24-acre site consists of previous farmland and is currently undeveloped. An environmental analysis will be required when the site-specific development proposal is determined. Would the rezoning result in the orderly and logical development pattern? Proposed amendment does align with the comprehensive plan and the surrounding land uses. Is it in conflict with the public interest and in the harmony with the general purpose and intent of land development regulations? Staff found no adverse impacts to the public welfare and finds that the request meets with the purpose and intent of the LDRs. Last item, any other matters that may be deemed appropriate in review and consideration of the proposed amendment, such as police protection, fire protection, and emergency medical services? All concurrency mandated facilities have adequate capacity to accommodate the most intensive use under the proposed zoning district. In conclusion, the requested RM8 zoning district is compatible to surrounding area, is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the county's adopted comprehensive plan, is consistent with the county's LDRs, is deemed suitable for the subject property, and is supported by staff. I'd like to point out that this also appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission, who unanimously recommended the board approve this rezoning, and the applicant is in attendance for answering questions above and beyond what I'll be answering for you. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Patrick. Are there any questions of staff by the commissioners?
No, sir.
No. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant or staff? Now move to have a presentation by the applicant.
John Blum, Engineer with Carter Associates, representing Laurel Homes. Also have with me today Peter and Deb Robinson and Joseph Robinson with Laurel Homes. So I have nothing more to present than what Patrick did. He did a good job. Just here if any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the commissioners?
No, sir.
For the applicant? County staff?
County staff rest.
At this time, any input from the public? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on behalf? Having given ample opportunity, we'll move on to final presentation or argument.
Thank you.
County staff?
Nothing else to add, sir.
You're rested. By the applicant? At this time, I'd like to ensure that all documents, tangible evidence, if any, have been admitted into evidence and are in the hands of the clerk. At this time, we'll notice that the county staff agenda materials and are automatically admitted to evidence unless there is any objections. Now closing, close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Both to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. That was probably the shortest quasi judicial hearing we have had. At this time, we'll move on to public notice items.
Would you like me to announce that, Mr. Chair? The next item is of just giving the public notice that there's going to be a joint public workshop on October 23rd at 6:00 PM between the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss the plan development review and approval process. I know that's something that's been requested.
Thank you. Now move on to county administrator items, and that would be item 12A, which is ratification of amendment of collective bargaining agreement between Indian River County and Teamsters Local 769, providing for a general wage increase for fiscal year 2025, 2026 to 2027.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the county, the Teamsters, Union Number 769 have completed their negotiations under the wage reopeners for actually for the remaining, remainder of the contract, which constitutes fiscal years 25, 26, and 26, 27. That's provided under the collective bargain agreement that will expire on September 30th, 2027. The Teamsters have voted and approved the amendment, and the amendment is being presented to the county commission for ratification. Essentially, the, the, the agreement or the, what is approved, the amendment provides for a 4% general wage increase or $1 per hour, whichever is greater, effective for full pay period in October 2025, and that would be as well the same for October 2026, 4% general wage increase or $1 per hour, whichever is greater. All other terms and conditions of the collective bargain agreement remain unchanged. I would like to note that under the budgetary impact, it, it identifies there's a shortfall of $66,768 in the fiscal year 25, 26 budget, and initially states that we will be funding that from cash forward October 1st via budget amendment. I would like to share with the board that we have a commitment from all of our directors and the county administration that we'll, we will accommodate and absorb those costs with our existing budget and not require any cash forward from the, from our reserves. Additionally, we are establishing the regular non-union employees' general wage increase the same for fiscal year 25, 26. With that, staff respectively request the board approve ratification of the amendment to the collective bargain agreement between Indian River County and the Teamsters Union, Local Union Number 769, providing for general wage increases for fiscal years 25, 26, and 26, 27, and authorize the board chair to sign the amendment. With that, I'll return to the board for any questions. And I'll tell you, with the addition of the general or the regular non, non-union employees, the $66,000 increases to $108,000. But again, there was unanimous, it was unanimous among the directors, the administration, that we will absorb those costs within our existing budgets.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Move approval.
Second. Do we have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by myself? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thought he had something.
It's after. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do you have a little something now? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the board, and I'd also like to thank our negotiating team, primarily led by Mike Zito, our Deputy County Administrator, and Suzanne Boyle, and would also like to thank the members of Teamsters, Steve Myers, Dale Hibbert, and all the, the members of the team in coming to this agreement. We think it's fair and equitable, and there is movement on both. We think it's fair and equitable, and there is movement on both sides, so I certainly appreciate everybody's efforts in this. So, thank you.
And they're both right here, and can you guys come up a minute?
Suzanne, Mike?
Yeah. Refreshing.
Is Daryl here? I don't see him here.
Yes, sir.
And I'll echo the county administrator's words, but more importantly is the amount of meetings, conversations, redirection, understanding, exploration with dealing with the available budget, and keep it within the available budget, and negotiating with, and I want to also thank Steve Myers and his team as well. It is a time of understanding, and I want you to know that the both of you have worked diligently to get us to this day, and I wanted to publicly thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Credit goes out to Teamsters as well as cooperative negotiation, really facilitative as opposed to competitive, to see what we can get on the table and agree to, and that's where we landed. So, thank you very much.
I wish all negotiations went the way this went.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is an executive session. We will have an executive session, and it will be attended by your entire board. The executive session to discuss the IAFF negotiations, the rank-and-file unit. Staff is scheduled in an executive session, and this is allowed under Florida State Statute 447.605, with the board to discuss negotiations with the IAFF for the rank-and-file unit. The meeting will last on, be held on today's date. The meeting is exempt from Florida State Statute 286.011 in the sunshine. The discussions are limited to matters related to the negotiations, and members of the bargaining committee that will be present at the executive session will include Suzanne Boyle, Director of Human Resources, Michael Zito, Deputy County Administrator, David Johnson, Director of Emergency Services, Management and Budget Director, Kristen Daniels, Labor Attorney Benton Wood, and County Administrator John Titkannich, and inclusive of all five county commissioners. It's anticipated the meeting will be about a half an hour, and we can't be held to that as discussions arise, but till then, we will now be moving forward and leaving the room and having our executive session. Please stay comfortable. Thank you.
We'll now be reconvening. The executive session has concluded and we're all back in order. Thank you for your patience and time. We'll now go on to departmental matters, which is Building of Facility Services, item 13A1, which is Transition Custodial Services and Contracted Services to In-House Operations. Probably need a staff member.
Yeah, I'm looking for the... Maybe they didn't get the message.
Right.
Let me just check the green room real quick.
Yes. And with all that's due, we, as you all, you didn't anticipate when we would be arriving. We estimate a half an hour, but sometimes the talk continues. So, but thank you once again. The county administrator is seeking the staff member to present. Thank you, and it's still good morning.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Anthony Warren. I'm the Director of Building of Facility Services. And this is for our Facilities Management Department. And we're proposing to transition our custodial services from contracted services to in-house operations. Following the termination of our CER Signature Cleaning Custodial Service contract, several other third-party custodial service companies were contracted, were contacted to provide services to the county. All of these companies would be significantly more expensive than what we have currently budgeted for the CER Signature Cleaning. In the interim, Facilities Management Division utilized existing staff to complete in-house cleaning. After several discussions about the quality of custodial services provided by the county by third-party companies and based on internal audit by the Clerk of the Court whereby Erwin Hasley, Internal Audit Director, recommended that instead of using contracted custodial services, the county hire full-time custodial employees. Staff is requesting to bring custodial services in-house. This request aims to ensure adherence to employment standards with background checks and maintain a high level of service, of customer service. While art source and provides basis coverage, it has resulted in security concerns, insufficient background screening of employees, limited flexibility, additional charges for special projects, low quality of work, insufficient oversight of custodial staff, and challenges maintaining consistent accountability. The proposed request positions the county to deliver services excellence with greater accountability and flexibility and will reduce budgetary expenses. We attached an analysis that shows our staffing structure that includes salary benefits, total labor costs, and additional equipment and operating supplies. The benefits of the in-house model, quality control, direct oversight ensures higher consistent standards, flexibility scheduling priorities can be aligned with county needs, accountability, and how staff take ownership as part of the county's team, workforce stability, investment in training and development fosters retention. I'd like to note that we've been getting several compliments using our current in-house employees, and those are employees that we currently have on staff, and we'd like to bring in additional staff on to cover us going forward instead of on a temporary basis.
I have to say that the adaptation, it was under, again, an unusual circumstance, that the transition was absolutely incredible. I mean, we didn't mind taking out the trash for a day or two, but when, when staff stepped up, it was almost as if there was another, a new company intact, operationally, and knowing exactly what had to be done. So hats off to our team for organizing and, and getting this done so swiftly and, and talking with the, the staff members that are doing that. We're customarily doing other things for the people of the county, for the county building in many other directions, and they have a very diverse function that they were able to just muster up and get the job done. And they're here every day, at night, evening, afternoon, morning, and I just think this is a seamless fix.
Great. I agree. John Evans, I'm Facilities Management, and I totally agree with you, Mr. Chairman. The, the crew that, that came together and do the work and do an outstanding job, they're working hard, and they do take a lot more pride in, in the building and cleaning it up and, and seeing what needs to be done. So that's helping us for future needs as well, for maintenance as well as aesthetics and cleanliness of the buildings. So, thank you, sir.
And it also is very nice, I don't know about my colleagues, but it's nice to see the uniform presence in, in, in the building.
Yes.
And people that know other duties in the building as far as for, for door safety, building security as well. And again, it's not just about the performance of the duty, but it's also the ability to do their other duties at the same time. And I, I think it gives you better control and better understanding and better performance.
Yep, I agree. I guess that's it, yeah.
You think that's it? It's covered.
I think it's it.
Anybody have any?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
I think they, they did a great job, a great team. You know, I want, I want to thank you very much. And I think the chair is quite correct. I love seeing our own people in the building. If there's, you know, if there's no further question, I'm happy to move to approve.
All right, thank you. County Administrator?
I just, I just want to thank Anthony, Nancy, they worked together, working with John Evans and Chad, Chadwick Bacon. You know, Dr. Bacon put together the proposal to help us get here, but it really was a collaborative team effort, and they responded expeditiously, and they started talking about this, you know, concept, Anthony and Nancy, immediately, you know, even prior to the, the, the report coming out. So I appreciate their leadership and their, and their help in all moving this forward.
I also believe there's another collateral gain here. They're going to see things that they're in control of. They're going to see shortcomings, maybe perhaps something in the building that would have to go through a, a job ticket that may go through a department. They're going to see it, and I have hopes that maybe perhaps we'll have even a higher level of performance.
Yes.
Because of their other duties and responsibilities.
Right. I think so too. I think it's a good move.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would add that although this increases our FTEs, it is a cost savings. Also in the future, I would suggest that this could possibly be a career path. We've all heard the stories about CEOs and CFOs that started in similar positions, and I think this is healthy for the agency, other opportunities. Look forward to those men and women succeeding.
Kind of like a reverse privatization. Bringing them into fold.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to second Commissioner Moss's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Moss, Commissioner Adams, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Sign of a good job when you get a 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, move on, and now we have Box and Rec, item 13H1, consideration for sale agreement for the purchase of the 21.89 acre Hale Grove site through the Environmental Lands Exposition Bond. And our team is here.
Good men, good morning, Commissioners. Beth Powell-Parks, Recreation and Conservation Director, and we also have Wendy Swindell here. So today, we are following up with the recommendation for the Board to consider both the Hale Grove as well as the Durant's Place properties. Staff's recommendation is to, sorry, wrong item here. To request that you approve the Hale Grove contract agreement and authorize staff to proceed with due diligence period and close of the purchase. Now, we are happy to go over any of the details of the Hale Grove as a refresher. We have also the Canva slide presentation that we presented at the last board meeting, and that's at your request and discretion if you'd like for us to review that information. Do you would like to review the information?
Mr. Chair.
The information on these items is in its own bound book.
It is, indeed.
And it was very exciting to read how much the, the bond funding will be going in a great direction.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I think it was early discussed at our last meeting as well as the sequential meetings, and again, it is doing what it's supposed to do in preserving particularly some of the parcels that are zoned for homes, and I think it's a huge success for the county. We're in the right direction. With that, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, yes, I'll forward. I'm very familiar with law.
I'm very familiar with all the conversations we've had at ELEP and everything else. But I don't know, Wendy and Beth, can you kind of explain what the next step would be with additional funding? You know, what might, it might be a little premature, but what, what's out there? What's, what potential would be to, to help with the cost of this? Because I think this is a great purchase, a great piece of property, and we just need to see what else we can do.
So, speaking on behalf of both the Hale Grove and the Durant's Place property, which is the next agenda item. Wendy can speak to that because she's been having some conversations with St. John's already. We have already started to look at different funding sources and also finding out, you know, what the state of Florida, the funding right now is a little bit up in the air. So we, we will, we will be researching that. But in the meantime, Wendy has some conversations with St. John's on these properties.
Well, we have been having some preliminary discussions with St. John's about teaming on projects. So they're looking towards the county to put forth some of the properties that are in particular adjacent to the lagoon. And this would be one where I think they would look at that. And as I mentioned in our prior meeting, DOT is also interested in looking at some water quality improvements for both this and the Durant's parcel. So there's definitely some opportunities out there. And it's kind of a blank slate ecologically. There's a lot that I think we can maximize out there, similar to what we did at Jones's here.
I think it's important to note that the funding from St. John's, at least in these preliminary discussions, is not for acquisition, but it would be for the improvements, water quality improvements. So we'll be looking at other funding sources as we move through the due diligence period. Once we now start moving toward the acquisition, now we can start researching some of the acquisition partnerships that might be available. Timely as it is, I'll be going to West Virginia next week to attend the National Habitat Conservation Planning Coalition's meeting. I'm going to be meeting up with, if you remember, Trish Adams, who used to work here. She's now the National HCP Coordinator. So we're going to take these opportunities, whether it's through some of the resiliency conferences, we attend the National HCP Conference. I'm going to be talking specifically with people about what kinds of funding sources are available. The service in the past has had funding available, particularly toward habitat conservation for listed species. So all of the properties that we're considering right now will all have some component of endangered or listed species or benefit to endangered and listed species. So we'll be talking to our partners. We have relationships. The county has done an amazing job through the previous two bond referendums and through our active land management of being very successful at acquiring partnerships, whether it was through the state, the feds, or even other organizations. So now that we know which properties we're looking at specifically, this gives us the opportunity to start looking at funding matches and sources that go with each of the properties. So we look at it property by property because each of the funding sources, you know, have, they have funds allocated for specific purpose. So in this case, water quality is going to be a big component. Looking at the DOT ditch and runoff coming out of the ditch is going to be something that we're looking at. We'll certainly work with Indian River Lagoon Council. Once we identify properties, it's been my goal for a very long time to work with the NEP and their grant writing team that they allocate money every year. And you graciously approve money every year to the Indian River Lagoon Council. I would like to take advantage of the grant writing writers that they have available. This tees us up for a perfect opportunity to go to the Lagoon Council and get assistance on the grant writing, which would leverage and expedite that process even further.
And one final thing, this is just for us to enter the due diligence period. What we have anticipated is that when we bring this back for year to, once the due diligence period is complete, and assuming that that comes back and there aren't any things that are unexpected, we would probably look towards bringing back at least a very conceptual idea of what staff is thinking, our possibilities. Not that we can design anything at this point, but at least give the commissioners and the public an idea to think of how we can maximize the use of this property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We'll move on to item 13H2, which is consideration for the sale agreement for the purchase of 11.74 acre Durant's Place site through the Environmental Lands Acquisition Bond.
Okay. So this, this is a second, the second parcel that's adjacent just north of the Hale Grove parcel. Staff respectfully recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Durant's Place contract agreement and authorize staff to proceed with the due diligence period and close of purchase. It's important to note that the due diligence on this parcel is set, set for 60 days after the execution of the agreement.
Once again, there's an abundance of information and pictorials as well. You've done a fine job in ensuring that we were familiar.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Hey, two for two. Thank you.
Good.
Next item is Public Works, the Rain Tree Corners Culvert Replacement, item 13J1. Good morning, Honorable Chair and Commissioners.
Ari Javed, Public Works Director, here to present on Rain Tree Corner request for emergency procurement of the collapsing culvert because of the recent rains. And if you recall, back in August, you had approved the, the initial funding for, for moving forward with the assessment for the culvert replacement at Rain Tree Corner. There's about 16 homes in this neighborhood that will get affected, you know, if the pipe was to collapse. Obviously, something else I want to point out is that, you know, when we came in August, we identified that, you know, if we were to move forward with the new special assessment process that was previously introduced by, by the County Attorney's Office, you know, that process can take all the way up to December before, you know, we can move forward with the, with the special assessment process. But before that, what we wanted to do is see if the, the commission would allow us to move forward with the emergency procurement. Because again, because of the recent rain events, you know, we run the risk of the pipe collapsing. It's a metal pipe, about 60-inch pipe. And this is the sole access for, for the neighborhood. And something that I also want to point out as it relates to our recent experience with the Water's Edge, this is a little different in the sense that all 16 residents that live in this neighborhood have already agreed that they are on board with paying the assessments. And they had actually already signed the memo or the letter that was submitted to the, the county not that long ago. So with that, what I would like to do is ask for Commissioner's blessings for moving, moving forward with the emergency procurement. The, the cost right now, based on the engineering estimate, is about $250,000. Again, I just want to also point out that this is just an engineering estimate. Once we get the actual bids or the, or the price proposal from the, the contractors, you know, the price can go a little bit up or down. But $250,000 is the engineering estimate that we have at this time, based on the engineering drawings. And with that, you know, we stand for any questions or any feedback that the commission might have.
Any questions of that? At this time, it would be a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Ayrman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Big project. Next item is Utility Services, item 13L1, which is Department of Utility Services Recommendation for Mandatory Connection Policy for Water and Sewer Services.
Good morning, Commissioner Sean Leeskey, Director, Department of Utility Services. And with me is Howard Richards, our Capital Program Manager, or Capital Project Manager. So we have a presentation this morning and a couple of things that actually, we have a couple of changes in what was provided with the, the handout and the, and the agenda. So kind of bear with us, we'll try to point those out to you as we go through it. Also, what I would ask, we kind of have a little bit of a presentation. So I would ask if we can hold questions until the end. And then we're happy to answer any questions we have. But we do have kind of an extensive presentation we'd like to go through today, kind of lay out where we are with this and, and what we're asking. So with that, we're going to kind of jump right in and, and get things kicked off here. So purpose of presentation, again, we're kind of requesting board approval for mandatory connection. And there's a number of other things that we're requesting along with that. And we'll kind of get to that as we go through it. But we're going to talk a little bit about the regulatory drivers, kind of where we are and what's, what's driving this. Current conditions, where we are currently within the system. Septic to sewer program, so what we are actually going to be requesting with respect to where we are within the septic to sewer program, what we've done, what we're in the process of doing, and where we might go. A good portion of this is going to be talking about the financials associated with this and really what it costs for both the public infrastructure as well as the private infrastructure. And then discuss a little bit about the alternative to connection to county sewer, which is the OSTDS and the Enhanced Nutrient Removal System associated with that. And OSTDS is onsite septic, or actually onsite sewer treatment and disposal system is what OSTDS stands for. So House Bill, several years ago, the state legislature enacted House Bill 1379 and/or Senate Bill 1632. Those bills prohibit what we call that OSTDS or new OSTDS within the BMAP, which is Basin Management Action Plan or Indian River Lagoon Protection Program. For the most part, and we'll get into, show you a map what those areas include. But for the most part, the majority of the eastern part of Indian River County is within the Indian River Lagoon's BMAP location. And so we're talking about prohibiting new, and for lack of a better word, an OSTDS, a septic system. It's just a fancy word for that. But it prohibits those systems within the, within that area. So it set key dates as of January 1st, 2024. New OSTDS or new septic systems must be this Enhanced Nutrient Removal System. So anything that's going in the ground new today, so if somebody's building a home and they require a septic system within that BMAP, are required to install this new Enhanced Nutrient Removal System. They also said that by February 2nd, 2026, and every two years thereafter, we as a utility within the BMAP must provide FDP with an update on the properties within the, within the county or within that BMAP location that continue to be on OSTDS, where sewer is available but are not connected. So they, we're required to identify those homes or lots or parcels where there are structures that could theoretically be connected to the sewer system but are not and continue to be on OSTDS. Every two years, we have to provide that to, to FDP. And then by July 1 of 2030, any property on an OSTDS must connect to central sewer if it's available or upgrade to this Enhanced Nutrient Removal System. And again, that's by July 1 of 2030. So kind of just to give you an idea of, of what that BMAP looks like, you can kind of see here on the map that again, the majority of, of eastern part of the county is within the Basin Management Action Plan for the Indian River Lagoon. We're in the central Indian River Lagoon District. So the majority of the county, including areas even west of 95, are within that BMAP area. And so again, anyone developing in those areas that is on, on septic system and they're developing on a septic system today has to install a new Enhanced Nutrient Removal System. And by 2030, we need to either connect to central sewer or modify their system to this Enhanced Nutrient Removal System. So that, the statutes go on, and actually, this has been in statute for some time, notification of OSTDS owners. So the statute says that no less than one year prior to sewer becoming available, owners will be notified of the anticipated availability and requirement to connect. So that notification can be through email, through, through mail, some way notifying them that, hey, sewer is available, you need to connect. Upon notification of sewer becoming available, owners have basically 365 days to connect to central sewer. And then provide option to prepay the amortized value of the connection charges and equal monthly installments without interest for up to two years from initial notification. So that really allows them, hey, we're bringing you sewer. If you're interested in starting to make payments on this, you can start to make payments on this, this cost of this connection. And that OSTDS that need repair or modification, to function in a sanitary area, must connect to sewer if available within 90 days of notification. So right now, if something is failing, if someone's septic system is failing, we are required to reach out and send them a notification that, hey, sewer, if sewer is available, that sewer is available and requiring you to connect, in which you have only 90 days to connect in that case. And in hardship cases, they can extend, request an additional 90 days for, so up to basically six months for connection in those cases. And that's currently within state statute. Just to kind of lay out a couple of other counties and agencies with mandatory connection policies, staff did do some digging. And I, I want to commend staff as I, as we kind of go into this. Howard and his staff really have done a lot of research into this. And I commend them for their efforts in putting all this together. But, you know, here is listed a handful of other counties and municipalities that have mandatory connection policies and are really following the House Bill and the Senate and the statutes that are in place today. Citrus County, City of Palm Bay, City of Medina Springs, Pasco County, Manatee County, and Nassau County, or Nassau County. And all are following that House Bill 1379, which is what we just currently laid out. I'm not going to kind of read through that again. But it is requiring mandatory connections. IRC policy, so sewer connections require county water. So right now, the way our ordinance reads is that if somebody is connecting to sewer, we require them to also have county water. And the reason being is, is we, we only, we build a sewer based off of the water usage. And if we don't have a way to meter their water usage, it's hard for us to provide sewer. Now, there is a caveat to that, that basically says if they are on a private well, they need to allow us to meter that private well. And then we would base that sewer charge on their water usage from their private well. Unfortunately, I don't know that that has ever really been followed. We have a number right now. Currently, we do have a number of what we call sewer-only accounts. And we don't, we don't meter their wells. We basically do an average, and we've averaged that out. And we basically charge them an average. And I think it's four or 5,000 gallons is basically what we average. And so that's what they're charged for sewer. So we don't necessarily follow that, that, you know, water, they need to have water. But I think that was enacted before some people, so people had sewer before that was enacted. Today, what we are typically requiring is, is that if they're going to have sewer, they also have water. So, and, and there's, it does allow us to do special assessments against the property deemed to be especially benefited by county improvements. Essentially, if we are going to go in and put in the public infrastructure, that essentially allows us to provide and issue them assessments in which the homeowners within that area would pay for that public infrastructure through a county assessment. And so that can, that assessment can then also be paid over time. And I believe can be financed, and we have financed that over time. And, and we have done that in the past. And so kind of wanted to go through this, this, you know, this table a little bit and kind of get into this because this is real key as we get into kind of the costs associated with this and the financial side of this. But just to kind of lay out a couple of these codes. And again, Howard has, has got a, a matrix associated with a lot of this. And so Water Account exists, WAE is Water Account exists, meaning we have an existing water account with us today. They are being provided water by the county. The other, the next ones are Water is Available and a Lateral Exists. Essentially, that means we've got the, the water there, the meter, the line, the main is there. A lateral from the main to the home actually exists. The next one is Water is Available, there is no lateral. So while the water main is there, there isn't an actual lateral that exists. And then obviously, WNA is Water is Not Available. And on the sewer side, it's Sewer Available, Lateral Exists, Sewer Available, No Lateral. And then simply Sewer is Not Available. And again, meaning the public infrastructure. When we say it's not available, the public infrastructure is not actually in place and able to be provided to that, to that resident or that property. And that's key as we go through, and you kind of look at this. And that's really key as we look at the total parcels and what we're talking about and the magnitude of what we're dealing with in the county. And I've, I've mentioned this before, but if you look at the total taxable parcels, and again, this was all done through GIS and GIS mapping. But if you look at the total parcels within the county, we have roughly 68,374 parcels within the county. Within the urban service area, we roughly have about 63,749. And of those, about 53,000 have a structure. And so that gives you kind of an idea of what we're dealing with as far as the structures within. as the structures within the county. The structures with no sewer are roughly 28,000. Again, and that's a rough number, and those are numbers that we've come up with, and assuming that roughly about 28,000 parcels within the county today do not have sewer available to them, and fall into one of those, those categories that we have had there, whereas water is either available, or it's not available at all, and then sewer available, and what's the situation with their sewer. And so you kind of see that, that top one is water is existing, and sewer is available and a lateral exists. And right now, we only have about 15 parcels within the county where that's the case. So that means they could relatively easily connect today because a lateral exists, and they could go and connect to that. They already have a water account. And so we go from more, from less complex to more complex, to the very bottom where you have water not available, and sewer's not available. So, in other words, we would need to install both water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure to those, to those parcels and able to provide them with sewage today. So, again, those totals you see equal that total number of 28,374. But if you kind of focus on the, on the top, and I think we've got a slide that kind of shows this, those first top where water is existing, so we have an existing account, and sewer is available, and either the lateral exists, or there's a, sewer is available and no lateral exists, we're roughly looking at about, you know, close to 2,000 homes or parcels where that would be the case. And then if you look at that further, there are most, some of those are force main, and then some of them are gravity. And so we're kind of going to get into that a little bit as far as, you know, how easy is it for people to connect? And a key question that we're often asked is, do we have capacity? And so as we talk about this, you know, what does that mean? So laying out our capacities and our existing capacities, if you look at that top line, right now, we have about 12 million gallons a day of sewer capacity at all three of our facilities. So we've got three wastewater treatment facilities. At all three of our facilities combined, we have about 12 million gallons a day. On the water side, we have roughly about 20 million gallons a day capacity at our two plants. So we have two plants, one in north, one in south. And so if you look at that and you think about 28,000 sewer connections require, of those 28,000, if we were to connect all of them, we would also require another 6,000 or roughly 7,000 water accounts. Again, if we're doing, you know, no sewer without water, as we would connect those 28,000, we would also have to provide water to another 6,000. So if you look at that, the increase in loading on that would roughly be about five MG, around five MGD for sewer, and roughly about one and a half million gallons a day for water based off of those, those accounts and those connections. So if you look at that, based off of, if you add that to our current flows, our current flows right now, our sewer is roughly around, you know, six, six MGD. So you would end up around 10 MGD, and roughly we're around, you know, 11 MGD on water. We would be closer to 12 and a half by adding the additional water accounts. And so we still have, you know, the answer, the short answer to that question is yes, we have capacity. But that doesn't account for new growth, doesn't account for annexations, doesn't account for any potential expansions to the USB, and would certainly require infrastructure improvements to make all that work. You know, if we have a lot of that growth up north, most of that, most of that flow right now is coming to our central plant. Our central plant is actually nearing capacity. We would need to do some things within our system to be able to accommodate that, and make sure that we're able to move the sewage around to manage that more effectively and efficiently. So yes, we have capacity, but there's some things that would need to be done to improve infrastructure and to handle that. You know, septic-to-sewer program was initiated in 2010 to 2011. In 2017, I know many of you have heard me talk about this. We had Schulke do a report, Shucky, Bill and Stotter do a report for us, that laid out, you know, all the septic systems within the county. And when they did that, they did, they broke it out into, you know, basically subdivisions and parcels within the county. And they had about 300 of those, and they prioritized the top 30 of those. And I think I mentioned that to all of you before, they, that report prioritized the top 30 based off of soil type, proximity to surface water, the population density, meaning how many homes could theoretically connect in that area, depth to groundwater, and age of the septic systems or OSTDS systems. You know, based off of that top 30, they estimated about, we could, we would connect about roughly 6,000 septic systems with a potential reduction of about 103 pounds per year. We are reevaluating that. We are in the midst of our Integrated Water Master Plan with HDR, and they are looking at that report. They're going to reevaluate it and kind of take a look at that, and do we need to reprioritize? Do we need to kind of move some things around and look at that a little bit differently? So we will be looking at that and potentially seeing a slight reprioritization with that. But we did want to kind of lay out where we, what we've done with respect to septic-to-sewer and where we currently are. So this map kind of lays out in the green are the projects that we have completed to date. So a lot of it is in, within Wabaso. So we've done Wabaso Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, both A and B. We've completed those. We've completed both North Sebastian Phase 1 and 2. Again, that's kind of up in the northern part of the county, the green area. And then we also completed Floravon Shores Phase 1, which you kind of see is a small strip there in the middle. We do have funding to complete Floravon Shores Phase 2. We've got grant funding to do Hobart Landing and Wabaso Island. We also got some grant funding now to complete the North Sebastian Phase 3, and we are working, as you all well know, with the City of Sebastian and the CRA there to install some infrastructure to allow the CRA to, and all the parcels within the CRA to connect to sewer. So those are the projects we have ongoing now. And, you know, what we wanted to point out as part of this too, and some of those projects are probably included in these numbers, but again, if you're looking at the priorities, we're looking at ones, those with water available. So again, water available and the account is existing, those are going to be our top priorities. And then the sewer is available and the lateral exists, or the sewer is available and no lateral exists. And you can kind of see, we break that down into force mains of four inches, and force mains greater than six inches. And roughly, you know, that equates to, you know, when you look at all the sewer available and waters available around, 2,600 connections. And we're going to kind of have to prioritize that. And when we say, you know, sewer is available, in some of those cases, we may have to evaluate that. Started kind of even looking at the map, and I'll show you the map in a little bit. While it would appear that sewer is available, there may be some challenges that prevent sewer from actually being available, i.e. a canal in the way. So it looks like that when you do a GIS mapping, it shows that that sewer line abuts a home, but it doesn't say, hey, there's a, there's a canal that's in the way, and you have to cross that canal, and that makes things more complex and more complicated. So we will have to do some evaluation of those, but generally speaking, you know, those are our top priorities. And again, when you look at that, it goes from less complex to more complex, and usually less, less cost to more cost, when we kind of go in priority. And again, what we're talking about with quick wins, we think, you know, those quick wins that could relatively be done with how a whole lot of extra work and a lot of extra, you know, infrastructure, wouldn't need any, require any additional infrastructure is around 600, again, give or take, you know, some evaluation there. And again, this is just some general maps of the county to lay out those areas where we've identified. Again, this is based off of GIS mapping. So these green areas have identified areas where they are budding sewer, and theoretically sewer is available. And so this is where sewer line's existing, and there's existing parcels. And so you can kind of see there's some areas up in Roseland and North County. You know, there's, there's, you know, line, and I don't know if this will show up on, it doesn't show up on the screen. But if you kind of look at the map in that one area where you see kind of the line of homes that's in Sebastian, you know, and looking at that one, while it looks like quick winds, unfortunately, that's where I was saying, there's a canal there between those homes. So while some of the ones kind of on the south end may be able to be connected, some of those homes along there, due to the, due to the canal being between the water line, sewer line and their homes, that connection is actually going to be a little bit more complex, and sewer may not actually technically be available in those cases. So, again, it would require us to do some evaluation in looking at this as we kind of look at these maps a little bit further and understanding what that means. But again, this is central part of the county. Again, you can kind of see generally those areas where sewer is available and could theoretically connect. And then again, in South County. And again, we have to do some evaluation to understand these areas and how easily could sewer can be connected. And then to just give you an idea of where we are with those existing projects, this kind of is a timeline. Floravon Shores, we are out to bid, I believe, and we should have bids backed soon on that. We have Hobart Landing, that has actually already been awarded. We have a design builder. We're working on contracting for that, so we have a design-build contract that we're working on for that. Sebastian CRA, we are, you know, hoping to get that here started soon. We're still waiting on materials and things to come in to get that project started, but once that gets in, we hope to kind of get through that and get things moving pretty quickly and get that done within the year. Wabaso Island, that RFP should be out, RFQ should be out on the street here shortly, so we hope to kind of get that process moving. And then North Sebastian, that grant we were just recently awarded. So again, once we get Wabaso started, we should get that started relatively soon thereafter. And just to point out that, you know, our plan and our hope is to try to get these all done before 2030, before that looming date, so that those projects can all be done, and the homes within those areas could theoretically complete those connections before 2030, and before they would have to upgrade their, their septic systems or their OSTDS systems to the Enhanced Nutrient Removal System. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Howard to kind of discuss some of the financials and go through some of the details of the financing associated with it.
Thank you, Sean. So, to get into costs, let me just kind of go over what the cost elements are. When we talk about costs, we're including public infrastructure. Public infrastructure includes the mains, the laterals, and the lift stations associated with sewer. The private side connection, private side connection primarily includes permitting equipment. We are assuming that sewer connection is going to be a pressurized connection system across the county. Of course, when we get into it, we will be looking at a gravity as an option as well. But for the purpose of estimating the cost, we assume it's going to be pressurized sewer. So that typically includes equipment that is on the private side. And again, there's labor and material associated with the installation of the equipment. The septic tank pumpout and abandonment and property restorations are included on the private side connection. And then lastly, we have the customer service charges. That includes impact fees, account deposits, meter charge for connecting water. Again, everything to, up to this point is based on current policy, which is no sewer without water. So there's meter charges involved, and then there's account setup comprising the customer service charges. So oftentimes when we talk about public infrastructure, private infrastructure, we, you know, we get questions. What do you mean? What's the demarcation point? When you say pressurized versus gravity, what does it look like? So we've included, included a few pictures here to help illustrate that. This first one here shows gravity sewer connection, gravity on the property side, and gravity in the, in the right-of-way side. And this one kind of illustrates it. In the middle there is, you'll see a white dash line, which is typically the demarcation point between the right-of-way and private property. Just on the edge, on the public side, there's a clean-out, which is typically the demarcation point where everything to the left in this picture would be the private side, and everything to the right would be in the public infrastructure. This next picture here shows how gravity sewer transitions into force main. This is a picture, an example of the collectors within the neighborhood are gravity mains. Eventually, they flow downhill until they get to a pump station, which we call the lift station. From there, it pumps into a force main to higher elevation or longer distances. This, this next slide here shows a grinder station in a home. Typically, the grinder station shows in the middle there is actually into the ground. And that picture to the top right shows what the cover looks like. Everything is below ground. And in this case, the grinder station, which is on the private property side, is actually a pressurized connection, but it can pump into either a force main or a gravity main. And in some cases where it's gravity main, if the house doesn't have the slope from the home to the gravity main, you may have to use a pump station, similar to this. This next one here shows what is called a step system. This is what the City of, City of Verbeach uses extensively. It's called a septic tank with effluent pump. That's what step is. Fairly similar to a grinder, except the solids are left behind and left to decompose, whereas the liquid is pumped off-site into a sewer line and off to the treatment plant. This last one here is an air vac system depicting a vacuum sewer system. We do have vacuum sewer systems in our, in our system today in Rock Ridge area. It's an older vintage style, but they've come a long way and they've made significant improvements. We have recently visited vacuum sewer installations in Florida, and all the utilities, I mean, they just swear by it. It's very easy to install, and it's within the options that we will evaluate in our septic-to-sewer program. And then this, this picture here shows some actual examples of projects we have recently completed. To the left is a picture of a lift station in the Wabasa area. We have, in the last few years, transitioned to an above-ground lift station where the maintainable type parts, such as the valves, the check valves and so on, are above-ground rather than below-ground. Makes it easier for, for maintenance. So that's what's shown on the left. On the right is an example of a grinder station. Typically, all you see above-ground is a control panel, which is on the side of the home. And then on the left circle picture there is, is the cover of the grinder station. And some residents even go as far as decorating it by placing, you know, this artificial rock over it, give it some decoration, some landscape. So, so now we're going to get into the crux of, of this presentation. How much does it cost? This was one of the key questions that we were asked to present today. I'm going to show you a slide here that has a lot of numbers, so I'll just take a few seconds to go through it real quick. The first number I want to point you to is the number at the very bottom, which is 3.1 billion to 3.69 billion dollars. This is the estimated cost of what it would take to deliver, you know, sewer to 28,000 properties without sewer, and another 6,000 properties that would require a reciprocal water connection in order to give them sewer, right? So this is on the current policy. We're estimating this 3.3 to 3.6 billion dollars. Again, we've also organized the costs. The rows coming down shows the three components of cost, the infrastructure, the private side connection, and customer service charge. And each one separates out the water costs and the sewer costs. And then going from left to right, we go from the cheapest installations, so the less complex, to the most, the highest investments. That requires new infrastructure to be built on the right. And the, the last takeaway from this slide is to show the range of cost depending on what bucket you fit in, whether you already have sewer available, you have a water account, and all you need to do is connect to sewer versus to the right where new infrastructure has to be built. And the cost here ranges anywhere from 18,000 to 31,000 on the low end, to about 150,000 to 165,000 on the high end. And there's a few things about the numbers here. For one, we're taking numbers from recently completed projects. And two, these numbers don't reflect the use of grant as yet. Again, this is the full cost is what we're trying to present here, okay? So, that's the cost number. Now, the other question we're asked to present is what can be done to reduce the cost? Well, we already know we can, we can leverage grants, right? And we'll do that where we can. But what are other things we can do? The reason Sean went over those board, current board policies is that what we're going to ask you to, they have implications for what we're going to ask you to do, right? Number one, we're going to ask to suspend a no sewer without water policy. And on the, on the next slide, I'm going to show how these numbers I just presented to you are impacted by each of these. And on the next slide, I'm going to show how these numbers I just presented to you are impacted by each of these actions, right? We're going to ask you to suspend no sewer without water policy. Number two, we're going to ask you to waive the extension and connection charges where sewer is available to existing structures only, okay? And number three is waiving the assessment of IRC portion of the cost, i.e. what grants do not cover to build new infrastructure. And number four is to waive select permit fees for septic conversions. The three fees we're talking about are the Department of Health, the Department of Utilities, and the Building Department. Both the Department of Utilities and Department of Health do agree that they will waive their fees for septic-to-sewer conversions. With the Department of Health, we have agreed that as long as our utility inspectors do the inspections upon completion, they will waive the fees. So they've agreed to that. The Building Department has declined to waive their fees. Number five is allowing the Department of Utilities to participate in the procurement of equipment or services for the private side connections. For one, we believe we can shortlist plumbing contracts and do pre-negotiated prices with them, bringing down the labor cost by around, you know, 30 to 35 percent, maybe as high as 40 percent. And also to leverage account is buying power to piggyback contracts. And I'll show you what the numbers turn out to be, to piggyback existing contracts for equipments right now. So those are the five things we're going to ask you to do. And so here's that table again with all the costs. And again, if the first one is waive the no sewer the no sewer without water policy, which will impact those costs I have circled in blue. The next one is waiving the line extension and service fees where it's already available. And the next one is waiving the assessment charge of IRC's cost that goes into building new infrastructure. And this next one here is waiving certain permit fees. Again, the Department of Utilities and Department of Health will waive their permits. The Building Department has declined to do that. And this last one here is allow us to participate in the procurement of goods and services for the private side connection that we believe can lower the cost by as high as 40 percent. So with those actions taken, this next slide is going to be the same table now as a pro forma with those actions taken. And this is what it looks like, right? So with no sewer without water policy waived means we can forego the water connection and just go straight to the sewer connection. And that will drop those costs to zero. And so the key takeaway from this slide is that notice now how the the range of cost per property, which is a third line from the bottom, has drastically been reduced. Now, we're at a cost of 9,000 to 17,000 on the low end to a cost of 11,000 to 19,000 on the high end. Significant reduction, right, if those actions are taken. However, notice I kept the last line, the total estimated cost of the build out, the same. Because even though we're taking these actions, and it may not be borne by the property owners, those costs have to be borne elsewhere, or they do exist, so that is not changing. So the next question that we were asked is, okay, how much, I just answered, how much will it cost? What can we do to reduce it? What are the options to pay for it? That's what this table is intended to show. We found, well, certainly there's a DEP grants, but the DEP grants will only pay for the public infrastructure. So we're maximizing that to the extent that we can. The Clean Water Coalition is very interested in working with us. They currently work with the city of Verbeach and want to extend their program with us. We have met with them. And so they do have a program of grants where they will provide money to pay for the private side, but they're income-eligible. The USDA Section 504 Housing Repair Loans and Grant Program, we've also identified as a program that can be used to pay for private infrastructure. SIG is Special Interest Group Grants, such as the Land Trust, where they're targeting certain areas, and they'll pay for the grant. Not the grant, they'll pay for the impact fees, which they are doing for Hobart Landing and Wabaso Island. The CDBG, CDBG Grant, Community Development Block Grant Program is a program we've identified, but at this time would have to come up with a project, a specific project within an eligible area to be able to leverage that grant. And the Department of Utilities would have to be the one to apply for that grant. But it's a potential. SHIP is a program that will lend up to $20,000. However, SHIP now currently has a two- to three-year backlog just to even review an application, let alone approving an application. So that may not work within the timeframe that we're looking at. Just wanted to point that out. SELF Solar Energy Loan Fund Program is widely being used within the state. It's a non-collateralized loan, so you don't put your house at risk to take out that loan. It is not based on credit score. It is based on your ability to pay. So essentially, if you have a job, you can qualify for that. Very competitive rates. In fact, I mean, they offer rates that are competitive with secured loans. And Martin County is using it extensively, and they have met with us, we've met with them, and we've worked out a framework of how we could work together to offer that loan to properties to pay for connection. And of course, IRC do offer financing of impact fees up to five years. We do offer financing for infrastructure as well, but again, we're going to leverage grants to pay for that. So with all of these programs here, the Economic Opportunity Council of Indian River County is sort of a one-stop-shop place to get information on all of these programs right here. So I wanted to put that up there because it's really convenient to try to navigate. And they have access to other programs too that can help with doing that. So lastly, as we met with communities and we talk about septic-to-sewer and potential for mandatory connections, we do have some skeptics that say, hey, what's my alternative? Because if you're going to force me to connect, I'll just resist you and just go to the alternative. Well, we have these three systems that are approved by the state as alternative to connecting to sewer. First of all, if sewer is available to you, this is not going to be an option. That's what we're asking you to do. But this is an option here called the, it's called the in-ground nitrogen, I'm sorry, it's called the the nitrogen-reducing aerobic treatment units. Plumbers call it aerobic system for short. It is approved by DEP as an Enhanced Nutrient Reducing On-Site Treatment and Disposal System option. But it is not cheap. Currently, the cost runs anywhere from, for a new installation, runs anywhere from 12,500 to 20,000 or for a retrofit, 15,000 to 25,000. Notice a retrofit is more expensive. If you look at the picture on the right, it gives you an idea of how huge a system is. And nine times out of 10, if not all the time, it requires replacing the drain field to put a system like this in. So that really drives up the cost. There is also an annual inspection and service fee that runs between 1,200 and 2,000. And that does not include any repairs that may be required, and it does take power. So based on the numbers we just showed, if the board take the recommended actions, this is not going to be a lower-cost alternative. So to recap, what we've asked for, so the staff report has these 11 items in it. However, we're removing three of them, which is highlighted here. So just running through them real quick. We're asking the board to adopt a mandatory connection policy in compliance with SB 1632, support negotiated costs under special circumstances, i.e. Policy 20108K, offer a grace period for new homes built with ENR OSTDSs. So for example, before we construct sewer to a property, if they upgrade to the Enhanced Nutrient Reducing System, we're not going to force them to connect right away, but offer some kind of a grace period. Approve a flat rate or tiered billing in lieu of metering private wells. That is just not a practice that utilities like to do, although it's written into our policy, so we wanted to forego that. E is to waive the assessments of property owners. The infrastructure costs not covered by grants. So the grants we currently have pay out to the tune of 75 percent. We have a 25 percent match. Current policy would require we assess that 25 percent. We're asking you to waive that. G, skip over H, we're not asking for that. G is to waive or reduce certain permit fees applicable to water and sewer. Allow us to waive the Department of Health permit fees and the Department of Utilities, and the Building Department has declined. Item H is to endorse or promote third-party financing programs. I mentioned the SELF program. It's a program that we would like to work with. Item J is to authorize sending out mandatory connection notices, of course, in coordination with outreach efforts. So that concludes our presentation, and we are happy to take any questions.
Have we lulled you to sleep yet?
Mr. Chair. You guys want to put the point? You're going to yield?
I'll yield.
This is a great point. I think it's necessary. All the reasons for it are spectacular to help the lagoon. I can't see anything wrong with it, other than one thing. And that's still, there's a cost factor in it for some of these residents that even getting it down is still extremely high for some. That's the part to overcome. I think, you know, the public perception, everything else, I think everybody wants to do their part. It's just going to be, the tough sell is going to be the cost. And I mean, it's just, I know y'all are trying like heck to find grants, find ways to get stuff done, find ways to lower their cost. I think it's wonderful. I just think that's going to be the, you know, you say, well, we passed mandatory connections. There goes the cost. I mean, it's protect the environment. I can't say anything on the good, on the positive side. The negative side is still going to be, we're going to be looking at the, it's going to be the cost factor. Do I have any suggestions or opinions on how to solve that today? No, I don't, but that's just, that's going to be the tough sell. I don't know what else to say about that, but other than that, it's a tough sell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If you want. Yeah, please, go ahead.
I think we need to start at the top when we have this discussion. And obviously, the Florida Legislature directed this particular action. In around 100 days, the 26th Florida session will begin. One question I have for the administrator is, our lobbyist team and others, I would suggest that this be a very high priority to start with. That would be one. When we look at the cost that we're proposing, and it's no reflection on the team that put the numbers together, you are asking a tremendous amount of our residents. Again, not on your behalf. That's the cost of doing business. The question, one of the questions, and I have a few more after the discussion, Mr. Chair. When we talk about the county financing versus this being on their property taxes, those are two separate items, correct?
Yeah, this would not, I mean, the assessment, if we did an assessment, would ultimately be on, it's a non-ad valorem tax, right? It would be on their tax bill, just like any other assessment that we do. So if we ended up having to do an assessment, it would be part of their tax bill.
And what would be the plan if property taxes are eliminated?
This doesn't, this wouldn't affect, property tax wouldn't affect that. I mean, a property tax would not affect an assessment. Now, if they came and said they can't do assessments, that's a whole nother story. I've heard some rumors about that. But as far as, you know, if they don't do property tax, if we do an assessment, that's aside from property tax.
But that carries with the property, if the property is sold?
Yes.
So in other words, there would be some type of cloud on that deed. Secondly, the 365 days that you're suggesting, where did that number come from?
It came from state statute. The state statute identifies that if we had notified them, once we've notified them, they have 365 days to connect.
But is there anything in the statute that says when this body should commence that clock?
I just wanted to clarify that we're sending two notices. The first notice, for where we're building new infrastructure, the first notice is a year ahead of when we anticipate to complete the project. And the second notice is when it becomes available. They have 365. So that gives a two-year period in which, when we send the first notice, we have to give them the option to pay in 24 months, equal installments.
So with the session coming up, we know things are flexible in the session. And we don't know today what's going to happen in the session that starts January 13th until the end. So that could dramatically change the direction that this body needs to make a decision on.
I think that's always a risk that we run. I mean, certainly, I mean, between now and 2030, you know, all bets are off of really what happens. But if the legislature decides something different than what's in there currently, certainly it changes the outlook and we may have to come back and re-approach things slightly differently. I think what we're asking today is based off of what we know today and the fact that we've gotten grants to move forward with certain projects. The difficulty we have is some of those projects, even those grants, require mandatory connections. So if we don't require people to connect, it's hard to go and say, hey, we're going to spend all this, this grant money to install the public infrastructure, and then nobody connects. And I think that we've, unfortunately, prior projects that happened. I think they funded prior projects where they funded projects and nobody connected. And, you know, that's a hard pill to swallow when you're going and spending millions of dollars to install public infrastructure and no homes connect. You've done no good. You've got infrastructure one that's sitting there not being utilized, and then you have homes that are still on septic tanks, so you've not solved anything. And they've spent a lot of money to do that. And so these grants that we've actually received today, if we go and install that public infrastructure, those grants require us to connect the homes. So, you know, if we've done that, unfortunately, we are committing to committing those homes to connecting to the system.
And I appreciate you being poised to do that and with the, I suppose, some of the expirations on the grants perhaps. But for now, I'll yield my time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up a question?
We jump back.
Have we had any pushback from any of the residents on the projects that we've done? Or was it accepted, like, this is great? I mean, I would love to have sewer in my house. It's all about the cost.
I think when, I mean, is there pushback? There's always a little bit of kind of give and take. And I think when we've, and Howard can maybe attest to this too, when we've gone and met particularly with like Hobart, I think there's some skepticism, there's some concern. But when we lay it out that, look, we're spending all this money, that theoretically, the only other way you get that is to do an assessment. And if you did an assessment, that would be X amount of money that you're also having to spend, which is, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially. And so we're saving them hundreds of thousands of dollars and allowing them the opportunity to connect. And if we can do some of the things that we've talked about today, we're reducing their costs drastically from what it could be. And I think they've been accepting of that. And see that there's benefit in that we've gone out and got grants and we're doing efforts to bring them a cost of bringing... to bringing the infrastructure to them without them having to pay anything for that, for that public infrastructure, thereby reducing their costs significantly. And so, I think there's, there was, you know, and I think we even saw that even from some of the folks on Wabaso Island when we met with them. We have had public meetings with both groups, an initial outreach and effort with them, and I felt, coming out of those meetings, that there was a lot of positive energy from them, and yes, while there's costs they have to, they would have to spend, theoretically is how we're pointing out towards the end, if they had to go to this enhanced nutrient removal system, there's costs they have to spend there, too. So, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's one cost or the other. It's, it's, you know, six in one, one half dozen of another, and you're going to be stuck spending money one way or the other. In some cases, if we can reduce the costs, it's actually going to be cheaper for them to connect to sewer than it would be for them to modify their system, so.
When we presented the numbers, we showed it to them in terms of how much the grant, utilities, and other subsidies compare to their portion of the cost for the private-side connection, which sometimes can run between three to five times as much. When they saw that, it's like, oh, well, if I'm getting this much, I don't mind, you know, paying for my, my share for the private-side connection. That's the kind of, that's some of the sentiments we got.
And I, and I, and I do want to caveat that, that, you know, that, that might not necessarily be the, the belief of everybody within the neighborhood, but I certainly feel like some were, were very open to that and understood that, you know, there was benefit that they would be getting, and, and some of the costs needed to be borne by them. But we also understand, that's why we've gone out and tried to find other programs to help, you know, fund, you know, that private-side connection, because we know that's not the case for everybody. So, we need to provide options, and we need to have those options available when we approach these homeowners with that, so.
I have, I have several questions about specific items, and I, I was there, by the way, when the presentation was made to the Wabaso homes, you know, the Environmental Learning Center, and initially, the, you know, nobody wants to spend money on this. It's like, everybody wants to do it, everybody understands it needs to be done, but it's expensive, really. I mean, you know, no matter how you look at it. So, you're, you're very diplomatic, you should run for office, really.
I don't do.
They were not happy. I'm going to tell the tru, I'm just going to tell the truth. They were not happy, okay? But then, when staff explained what it would have been without the grants, because they, you had grants for that, when staff said, well, you know, had not, had not been for the grants, it would have been this amount, then everyone was a lot happier. Because it was a significant difference, as, as I recall. I don't remember the exact number, but it was, it was significant. So, they, they were happier then. So, my specific questions, I'm looking at D. Approve a flat rate or tiered billing in lieu of metering private water supply. So, my understanding is that the county was doing this, you came into this, and this is the way it was being done. Do we have any idea or any way to estimate what the lost revenues might be, might be by this averaging? Is there, like, any way to know? Can you even take a guess? Like, are, are we even losing revenues by averaging?
You know, we, unfortunately, I don't know that we really know. I mean, there's, we're not metering homes, so we don't have, know, know how much water they're using. I do actually think we use an average of 8,000 gallons, and in some cases, we're probably, I mean, I hate to say it, there might be overcharging, in some cases, we're undercharging, and there's just no way to know. What we basically use is an 8,000, 8K usage, and that's what we've averaged, and that's what we've used, and, and we don't know what, we don't, we don't meter their water, we haven't been able to get in and meter their water, so we have no idea.
We've been doing this for decades, right? Like, this is...
We've been doing it for a while.
The whole, the whole time.
When we have sewer-only accounts, that's essentially what we've been doing.
Okay, so, there is no way even to guess? We're just, okay, so we...
Unfortunately, no.
We, we don't know, okay. E, waive assessments of property owners, the infrastructure costs not covered by grants. So, if we're waiving assessments of the property owners, how, how is that going to get paid? Like, what, what fund does that come out of? Is that, does that get paid by everybody then? Like, you are waiving it for them, but we're just spreading it out over everybody.
It would come out of our rates and fees. Yep, out of our capital improvement program, so, yeah, it would come out of the funding, money that we receive from other ratepayers.
Yeah, because I, I don't know if that's really fair. I mean, if, if, it sounds good to waive something, I mean, you know, I like it, but then, when you think of what the consequences are, yeah, you're waiving it for them, but you're spreading it out over everybody. I would want to, maybe we already have it, I don't know, see what the numbers are on that, you know, like, what, 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 how, how much is it going to go up for everybody? Because specific households or specific neighborhoods are, are not being assessed. And the last one is maybe similar, and that's G, and that is waive or reduce IRC permit fees applicable to water and sewer connections. So, maybe that's somewhere along the same line. If you don't charge the individual households or neighborhoods, like, where, you know, the money has to come from somewhere. So, where, how would we pay for that, then? Is that similar, are you spreading it out over every household, then?
It's similar that, I mean, we would be waiving, and the, it's a utility construction permit, so our fees are what we call utility construction permit, when they issue that, there's a fee associated with that. We would be, we'd be waiving that for septic-to-sewer conversion projects specifically. So, if they needed and required a UCP, we would waive that permit fee. You know, certainly, it's part of our fee structure, and, and it's something that we normally collect, but we're, we're looking for ways to try to minimize the cost for the homeowners as we do these projects, and, and feel that that is one of those things, and, and we've heard the term, hey, there needs to be skin in the game, and we're looking for ways that we can theoretically put skin in the game, and, and that was one of the ways that we could.
This is amazing, by the way, I really commend you on the, the depth, the, what you pursued, you know, all these different scenarios, and the, you know, the dollar amounts. I mean, it's really an incredible amount of work, and we know that we need the money, the funding from somewhere, it's just a matter of who pays what, and I would like to try to be as fair as we can, you know, to everyone, to everyone in the county.
And I know other jurisdictions...
While helping those that need it. And I don't know that there's a way to balance that.
And I know other jurisdictions have waived some of those fees as well. You know, the one thing that we won't waive are impact fees, because those impact fees basically are someone's purchase into our capacity, and it helps us to build capacity as we go, so we're not waiving certain fees, but there are certain fees that we feel we could waive.
We, so, do we know what the dollar amounts are of what's being requested to be waived? We have, was, item E was waiving assessments, and item G was waive or reduce permit fees? So, what was...
Yeah, the assessments, and Howard, we could go back and show, you know, show that slide.
Could we look at that?
The assessments are basically, when we got the grants, we, we applied for basically 75% of the total estimated cost at the time, so, in other words, if we applied for $10 million, we got 7.5. The rest of that would have to be, you know, 2.5 is what we're asking to be waived. So, that's essentially part of what we're asking for, is, is we only got 75% of the expected and at the time, estimated cost for those projects. So, that's, the 25% is what we're, we're asking to be waived. Excuse me.
And so, what is a dollar amount? And if you were going to spread that over your customer base, what, you know, would each person be paying, or each household, I should say, approximately, or give, do we have an idea?
That's hard to say, because you can't just take that number and divide it by the number of households, because it's paid through fees and rates and...
We're essentially absorbing it.
We are absorbing it.
And not being reimbursed for it. And what we would do in the past, like, it, like, Roseland comes to mind, because that's my closest frame of reference, but whatever the assessment needed to be that wasn't covered by grants was divided upon, upon the...
For the homeowners.
The homeowners in, within that project area. In this case, we wouldn't be dividing it between anybody, it would come out of our existing budget. We would just absorb it.
Correct.
As far as impact fees, we cannot waive impact fees. We pay impact fees. We can pay them. The money has to come from somewhere.
We're not recommending to waive.
Otherwise, we have to change through public hearings and ordinance to reduce the impact fees. Impact fees don't go away. We can't waive them. It sounds nice, but they don't disappear.
Right.
Whatever they exist must be paid, and that means that this commission will be utilizing tax dollar to pay the impact fees to offset the value. Once again, a very disannuous act, since the current ratepayer is paying the freight twice. They've already paid, if they've connected to sewer, now, all those ratepayers will be paying once again. It's astronomical.
I'm sorry.
Just the facts.
I don't really understand what you're referring to, Commissioner Fleischer, as far as paying twice if they've already paid. Are you referring to the absorption of that cost?
Absorption of cost, that's correct. Funding has to come from somewhere. When we waive fees, what we're doing is, we're going to go into resources that has been collected from the current ratepayers.
So, just to clarify, the impact fee fund, and clearly, the Utilities Enterprise Fund is going to have to go out to debt, and we pledge the revenues, all the revenues of the system for the purposes of debt. So, the impact fees, I think there's substantial case law that you cannot waive them. Actually, if you look at our current system, we have a lower amount for, that provides a public purpose as it relates to low income or affordable housing, but you just can't arbitrarily waive them or adjust them. So, that's just for the impact fees. Now, the, the other fees I think they're talking about is the public infrastructure fee, or the public infrastructure costs, not so much touching on the impact fees, am I correct?
Correct. We're not, we're not talking about waiving impact fees.
I don't understand why we're even talking about impact fees, because that's what's on the table.
I was just clarifying. I agree.
Yeah, we're, we are not asking to waive impact fees. We, we expect everybody to have to continue to pay their impact fees. What we're asking is to waive permit fees and connection fees. So, there are fees associated with it.
I, I want to, on this, the topic, he's talking about permit fees, I do want to say, I understand that Department of Health has agreed to waive theirs, but the reality is, the Department of Health is operating under inter-agency agreement with FDIP, who has the responsibility, and if you recall, two sessions ago, the Legislature is trying to extract the Department of Health out of the process completely, either take it in by their region or have us do it, and there's an expectation that there's going to be a plan review fee, and I don't know if the FDIP is going to be as magnanimous as the Department of Health, because it's statutorily, they are the agency tasked with the responsibility of managing the OSTDS program. So, we just, we want to be mindful of that, so we'd be talking really about the Utilities UCP fee only. I would just suggest, if you go down that route, you just focus on that fee and that fee only.
So, if I, if I could add something, the Department, the agreement with the Department of Health, their, their fee is to cover their inspection of the completion after the septic is abandoned. They, they go out and they do that. For them to waive that fee, the inspection still has to be done. What we've agreed to is, we will use our inspectors following their rules to do the inspection. So, that's, that's a difference.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but I know that they, just, I think we, you know, Kathy's back there, but we have actually, FDIP has reached out to us, because the reality is, Legislature made it very clear a couple years ago, when they took the responsibility from the Department of Health to FDIP, FDIP told the committees, yeah, no, we have enough people. And then they turned around the inter, inter-agency agreements with the Department of Health to do the plan review and the inspections, and they subsequently, I think it was, if not last year, the year before, they said, listen, you need to extricate, you need to divide assets, you need to take everything away, and it needs to go to the EP. And now, they are working around the state to contact jurisdictions to either take on that responsibility, or they're going to do it, it's my understanding, at the regional office level, which would really be problematic for us. So, just, I just want to, for this discussion, since it was unknown, I think we focus on the UCP fee and let that other one evolve, and we, until we better understand that impact.
I agree, John, thanks for bringing that up.
I think, yeah, I'm fine with all of it, except the two points where we're waiving things, which was E and G, waive assessments and waive or reduce permit fees, because I'd like to have more detail on that before I would feel comfortable agreeing to that. And I guess, I accept that we don't know or can't know the ramifications of the flat rate in lieu of metering of private water, that it's just been going on such a long time, and we just, you know, accept it as is. So, I guess, well, it's too much of an effort to find out, or you think it's probably not worth it, or...
We would have to meter the individual homes, and we'd probably want to be metering them for at least a year before we have any kind of semblance of, of what the average month would be, so, I mean, and that requires us to get into private homes, and there's just a whole lot, there's a whole lot around it, so.
Well, but those flat rates are based on the average of existing homes of the same nature, correct?
It's just a, we use 8,000 regardless of home size, so there's not, unfortunately, I don't know that we even look and say, hey, it's four bedrooms, five bedrooms, it's, you know. I think we typically just use an 8,000, and, and we can talk to Brian, but I think we, when we're doing sewer-only, it's just a flat 8,000 average fee. And again, in some cases, we're probably, I mean, I hate to say this, there's probably a little bit of, we may be overestimating, in some cases, we may be underestimating, and, and we just don't, we don't have a way to know that.
I doubt it's $3 billion.
Yeah, I know.
No, it's, it's not.
It's okay, I accept that.
We don't have that many, we don't have that many sewer-only accounts.
So, Sean, I know you have the priority, the, as it relates to the water available and the sewer and lateral, but, I mean, the, from an implementation standpoint, we, we would be focused on those priority areas, first and foremost, that are identified in the Shulki report, is that correct? Because we don't believe that that arguably has changed, because the data wasn't, I mean, it was about what water bodies are receiving, have a potential.
As far as bringing infrastructure, yes. Those quick wins, we're looking at where infrastructure currently exists today. So, we've got water existing and sewers, they're, again, theoretically available, so we're not having to add infrastructure. The Shulki report was looking at primarily areas where infrastructure did not exist, and we would be required to come in and put in the infrastructure. So, the Shulki report is somewhat separate. The Shulki report kind of gets more into the priorities five, six, and seven area where sewer does not exist.
I'm following you. So, what I'm trying to tee this up to is the question that I think Commissioner Moss is, is expressed concern about, waiving assessments for property owners with the infrastructure costs not covered by grants. For, if we're going to focus after these ones where they exist to where infrastructure doesn't exist, and we're focused on the Shulki report because of the impact to the environment, for those areas, would it not make, there's an environmental benefit or public purpose that could be argued for the, you know, of the county picking up the cost? Outside of that, I don't know if that would be the same argument. I would just say that, outside of those 30-plus areas, a 37 or 30, 30 something like that.
I mean, you, you could argue that connecting anybody through this program is benefiting the environment, right? I mean, any, any connection that we are, are making, we get credit through the BMAP. I mean, it may vary from, from household to household and parcel to parcel, just because of location and proximity to lagoon, but theoretically, any, any septic tank that we can remove within the BMAP is going to be a benefit to, again, theoretically, a benefit to the environment. So, I think that's where we were looking at, you know, the idea of waiving those, those non-grant-funded costs, and not doing assessments to those homeowners for the sewer side. Again, and we're not even suggesting we do that necessarily for the water side. If we had to bring water, I think we would have to still probably do an assessment unless we could get grants. But if we can get grants for the sewer side, and typically, unfortunately, you know, and I don't know if we could have gotten them 100% funded at the time, it was, you know, you needed to have some in-kind contribution, and so, the in-kind contribution was, you know, our 25% was what we consider an in-kind contribution, and that in-kind contribution is a benefit to the environment and a benefit to the lagoon and the health of the lagoon, thereby, we feel that that could be, it is appropriate to spread that out over the, the ratepayers of the county, so.
We have a...
We have a policy that requires mandatory connection already, do we not? We just don't enforce it?
The state statute's been in place and in effect for a long time. We just haven't, we haven't followed the sense where we've sent the letter saying, it's available, you, you need to connect.
Because we did have mandatory requirements for the Roseland project, as I recall. We have people that haven't still connected, but I think we gave them like a five-year sliding scale.
Yeah, we did. And, and there we actually had America Infrastructure. So I always forget what the ARRA, America's Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So we had era funding to actually pay for the private side connection, and we still had people not connect. And so unfortunately, even some of these numbers that are up here, the 15 that we have, are actually associated with some of the projects that we've already completed. So some of those are actually within Floravon Shores, and some of those are actually within, within Roseland. And, you know, they elected not to take advantage of that program. And I, I can't tell you why. When funding was available, I, I, I'm not sure why people elected not to do it. But we did not theoretically have mandatory connections. We basically gave them the option and said, here's funding available. And people, you know, for whatever reason, I don't know if they just figured they could not afford the monthly charge. They didn't want water. I, I, I'm not entirely sure why they decided not to connect. But we had a handful. The majority of the residents within Roseland connected. I want to say roughly 95% of the residents connected, but we did have a handful that did not.
And that was a project where we also, I don't know if we actually negotiated the cost with some of the private companies in the area to do the private side connection, but we did have a list of kind of pre-qualified, well, a company that was able to do that, that kind of knew the parameters and I believe, because that was a big concern from the private side in that project. Who do we need to call? We don't even know how to do this. And that seemed to work well and, and take some of that angst away. So I have no, you know, problem with trying to negotiate something. If they want to use somebody from the list, great. And if they don't want to use somebody from the list, you know, but the private side connection, it's not just the connections, it's also if you have a septic tank abandoning that septic tank and those types of things.
And the thought behind what we were suggesting there was if we can get pre-qualified firms that, you know, people would contact and they would still basically have their own contract with that pre-qualified firm. A pre-qualified firm would be guaranteed a certain number of, of connections and thereby bringing the cost down for the resident, right? So we would work with them to negotiate lower costs that, hey, we're going to guarantee you, I can't guarantee them anything, but we would think that you would get, you know, at least 100 connections over the course of this time period. Thereby, if you can give us a reduced cost, it reduces the cost to the homeowner. Certainly, the homeowner, I think, in that case, doesn't have to use that preferred if they wanted to go with somebody else, you know, they have a, you know, someone in their family, or they know somebody that happens to be a plumber and they want to use them. I mean, there's nothing that says they have to use that. But we're trying to work out something where we would have, you know, we'd go out for RFP, we'd have people give, and we would negotiate costs with them to bring those costs down for, for the homeowners. And likewise, on the infrastructure, as Howard mentioned, Martin County and St. Lucie County have reached an agreement with a distributor for the E1, these grinder pumps, where they get them at a substantially reduced cost. And so what we would do is piggyback on that. We would purchase a large number of them ourselves, and we would in turn sell that to the contractor, to the homeowner at a reduced cost. We wouldn't, you know, sell it and, and make a profit. We would basically sell it for what we purchased it for, and that thereby reducing the cost. For instance, on the open market, an E1 grinder pump costs five, around $5,500. Under that piggyback contract, it costs around $3,200. So that's the thought process, is we would somehow figure out a way to reduce those costs for the homeowners.
Well, you know, I think one of the things we've heard since the legislation has come down with the 2030 deadline is what are you guys doing to help us out as residents? Residents are concerned. They're concerned either about having to hook to sewer or having to transition to the fancy septic tank. And there's a cost associated with that. There's, there's going to be. And it's like this doomsday that we're marching towards without any kind of conversation about how to bring those costs down. And what I get a lot, and I, I'm assuming everybody else does, is we'll look at Brevard County, they have a, a program where they're helped paying, but then you go, when you look at that program, and your qualifications, it depends on how close you are to the lagoon. And it's really basically on average between $600 and $1,200. It's, it's, it's a token when you're looking at a $20,000 project. So I like that we're having the conversation about what we can do to help offset the burden to the residents because I think that's what people are waiting to hear from, like, they're waiting to hear a plan. They, they, we haven't, there hasn't been any conversation around that. So I appreciate trying to, to do those different types of things. And I think even the little stuff, when it all adds up to a larger package, package of savings. If you guys aren't comfortable with some of the waiving of, of fees and assessments, and we want to ask them to look back into that or get some more numbers or some other options, I, I have no problem with that. But at the end of the day, the state is looking for each county municipality, each utility to, in this, in this BMAP situation, to do something. So to not do anything and continuing to do status quo, not only are we not going to be able to avail ourselves of any kind of state grant funding because there's mandatory requirements now in those, or if you want to score high enough to actually get the grant, you need to have something that says everybody, they're going, the state money that's going to be spent is going to be used by people hooking up and going to solve what they're trying to solve in Tallahassee. So we're, that's going to dry up if we don't do something and it continues status quo. Appropriations is going to dry up. And quite frankly, we're not helping our residents by not coming up with a plan because now they're looking at having to go back and, and put in a new, a new septic system if we're not talking about how we can extend utilities. And that truly is going to be more expensive, especially as we get closer to 2030 because there's going to be a lack of resources because everybody's going to be waiting till the last minute, and now the price is going to double and triple. And every time we have this conversation, somebody says, well, we talked about this five or 10 years ago. I guess we should have done it then because it was cheaper. And every time we have the conversation at that time, it seems like a huge expense. But nothing is ever getting cheaper, ever. I mean, you used to be able to get a piece of bubble gum for five cents. Now you can't get it for, you know, less than $5 half the time. So we can continue to wring our hands and, and do nothing, and the price will continue to increase, and then we'll be up against the 2030 deadline. Or we can make some decisions and try to move forward and do something to try to bring the cost down to the residents, but also try to be responsive and provide them with information because it's not only about the cost. It's about providing the information on, on what they reasonably need to do and what they should expect. Not everybody in this county, irregardless of what we decide to do, is going to be required to hook up to sewer. They're just not. Some people are going to have to look at a new system. And some people are outside the BMAP and they're not going to have to do anything, and, you know, God bless them. But I just think we, it's, this is a hard conversation, but we're going to have to come to some resolution on it. Now, I do really appreciate the, you guys trying to look into other financing options. I think one of the hardest things we come across with some of this is I don't have $20,000 today. We have lower income populations. We have cash-strapped residents. And, you know, we, the state is mandating us to do something. We're the pass-through, but we're the ones that have to do it. So we're the ones that are going to, that bear all the angst from the residents. So if you can stretch that out over a longer period of time, it makes it a little bit more affordable and palatable. I know in the past, we've kind of talked about not wanting to get into the banking business, and that's not necessarily a conversation I want to have today. But the county can leverage a lot more than a, an individual homeowner. So I'm not saying putting it on the tax bill is necessarily the right thing, but there's other programs and processes out there that have been successful in other municipalities and, and counties and states that I think we should be looking at, even if it's something that's different than what we do today, because it might be something that's helpful to some of our residents. And just having options for them to consider, I think that is what our role is. If there's going to be a cost, our role is to try to make that cost as bearable as possible. And we don't have a lot of tools in that toolbox right now. So I would definitely encourage more discussion along those lines. But I guess to summarize, at the end of the, at the end of the day, we're going to have to do something because the more we talk about it, the closer we get to 2030, and the closer we get to not having very much time to figure anything out.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a comment?
Counselor.
I did want to let the board know that we do have mandatory connection language in chapter 201 of our code where we can require someone to connect to our water or sewer, and if they won't, we can do it ourselves and lean them. So I mean, obviously, that presumes it's available, but we, we have that language on the books. We don't have to rely on state statute for that.
I thought we did already have it on the books.
We do.
I think we used it for some businesses in the past.
For some businesses. And again, a lot of the discussion today, when we were dealing with enhancement for underserved communities, we used ship. We made special arraignment, arrangements. We shortened the time for commitments to the ship program. We were able to work with the state. This needs more work. You know, you can heat and spin sugar enough to get cotton candy, but I, I see nothing sweet from this. I, I see bitterness and, and, and cost factor, which is overwhelming. We, we're not done with the other waste that we were dealing with, trash. I just don't know how much the citizens can bear at this point. We are in recovery. We are not recovered. And, and, and I believe, and I'm, I'm talking about people that have to get up in the morning, get to work, and, and come home and figure out life with limited funds. I, I remember many years ago, I live in another jurisdiction, Sebastian. We were in the third phase of the, of the water lines coming in. And I remember seeing that bill. And it was overwhelming. And they said, well, you, you can do it. We have a, a payment plan. We're talking about payments as some other methodology. Well, those payment plans, I said, no, we'll just, we'll just do it. I just, and it was hardship. Thousands of dollars so I could have a water line that I didn't connect to. But it was mandatory. I was told I have to have that pipe in, in the lawn. And it's a couple of lots. So we had to do it. It took a couple of years to recover from that. And I believe this one is overwhelming. And we could talk about wave, and we can talk about broadening it out. The only excitable thing here is that we're getting closer to lagoon recovery, that we're moving forward like we're doing in many other projects. This one's big. And I don't know if the rate payer can accept the rate. It's, it's just a very difficult pill to swallow. Difficult topic. The, the state has made a requirement similar to what they did with the recycling program. Does anybody recall what the, the mandatory obligation was? Excuse me?
75%.
75%. And accolades to our team. We were on the, the top 2% of achieving that goal, but we did not. There was no penalty applied if we did not. And we were, I, I don't know, I, I believe we're up at like 68%. It was an overwhelming number. That was a few years ago. But then there was no penalty. They scrubbed it. I don't know what's going to happen here, but I believe the ask by the state, the, the tell, I'm going to use your expression, we've been voluntold, to do this, to impart upon the taxpayers, the citizens who enjoy living here, to this value? It's, it's incredible. Now, let's not take it away. You guys did an excellent job. You sat in and you, you briefed us all and overwhelmed at the amount of work that has to be done or had to be done to get us here. And yes, we actually do understand all the letters on top. And you well explained how we'd get there. But we didn't really talk about where are the citizens going to get the money? It, it's just, I thi, I think it's the largest pill we've ever had to be asked to swallow, and the citizens to ask to swallow. It's a prescribed medication with no distribution.
Well, I, I can say two things. One, I want to correct something, on the septic, on the sewer costs. And on the, we do have a tiered rate, and I apologize for misspeaking on that, and thanks to my staff for bringing this out to me. Brian came and corrected. So for mobile homes, the volume is 3,000 gallons, so on average, and we only have 42 accounts. For single family, less than 3,500, it's 7,000. We have 112 accounts of those. And single family above 3,500, it's 12,000. And we have seven accounts of those. Again, we have very few accounts, and unfortunately, there's just no way to know kind of where they are. But did want to correct that, and thanks to Brian for bringing that out. And I certainly understand everybody's concern about the cost. Unfortunately, the costs are only going to continue to escalate. So the issue is, is we do something now, and we try to solve some of this as best we can, or it's just going to continue to get worse and worse and worse. And I want to, you know, going back to, to even, and I, and I think Howard maybe spoke to this real briefly. If you look at the cost for going to this enhanced neutral removal system, and again, I don't know where this is going to go come 2030 and how this would even be enforced. But if you look at those costs, those are today's costs. And as that date gets closer and things get more and more, and if it, the date stays the same, those costs are just going to go up. And so we're talking, you know, to, to retrofit, I mean, new is expensive. To retrofit, $20,000 to $25,000. That's, that's a huge expense. And so that's not something we're mandating. That's something that, again, the, the state is mandating. And the state really is mandating mandatory connections. It's not something the county is mandating. It's the state is mandating that. And, you know, we're unable to get grants, and we're unable, if we don't, if we don't do something on mandatory connections, we're going to have to give that money back. I mean, I'm going to be flat, flat honest with you. We will not be able to move forward with those grant projects if we do not figure out, and if we don't have skin in the game, i.e. being willing to cover that additional 25% some way, whether it's an assessment to the homeowners, which just increases their costs even more, or we absorb that somehow within our costs as a utility, then we're, we don't have those grants. I mean, I, and I don't mean to, to put it out there bluntly, but that's the reality, is we are not going, those grants required us to do connections. And if we don't have some means to do that, we are not eligible for those grants, and they will come back and ask for that money back. So I think we need to be very conscientious of what we're, what we have agreed to do in, in, in accepting some of this grant funding. But without that grant funding, none of these projects get done. And so nobody connects. And they're going to be stuck, you know, in installing an enhanced neutral removal system. I think many people think that's a better option, but I can tell you, that's not a cheaper option. And long-term, it's probably not a cheaper option because there is a long-term going back, if you look at what he was putting up there, there's, there's power associated with it. It's not a high power, but there is power. And it's no longer a passive. So right now, what we call septic systems are passive system. Sewer goes in, it sits there, it kind of gets eaten up, and then that clear water floats to the top and eventually goes out into the leach field. to the top and eventually goes out into the leach field. These systems are not that way. These enhanced nutrient removal systems, they require, they're like multiple stages, they require pumps, they require power and in some cases, may require media and that requires maintenance and so, they require maintenance agreements and as you can see, that maintenance agreement costs anywhere from $1,200 to $2,000 a year. I can tell you, they're not spending that in sewer costs a year if they were to connect to county sewers. So, you know, ultimately, I'm gonna sit here and stand and say, "Our costs that we are suggesting are gonna be cheaper than if they had to go down that path." Again, I don't know where the state's gonna go and how the state's gonna mandate that and what's gonna happen come 2030, but I can tell you, at some point, something's gonna happen and something's gonna have to give and we believe what we're doing is a benefit not only to the citizens that are benefited by connecting to the sewer, but are benefiting the Indian River Lagoon, the health of that lagoon, getting these communities and these places off of septic that are right now sitting on the lagoon and, you know, I believe are a direct benefit to enhancing the health of the lagoon. So, I'll stop there and leave it at that.
Mr. Chair. Sean, how long, let's think we approved this, everything did it. How long before this would actually start as to what you want to do and not every, you're not doing everybody at once, right?
No, we laid that out on the schedule. I mean, we've got one right now, Floribon Shores, that, you know, we're trying to get construction going. We hope to get that construction actually started relatively soon. Howard can probably talk a little more about that. We've got the design build team approved for Hobart Landing. You know, as soon as we get that contract going, they'll start doing the design and looking at, you know, construction costs and then, you know, we've got the, I believe the Libaso Island RFQ is going out soon, sounds like today. So, you know, that's gonna be on the street. We'll select a contractor for that. The CRA, we're working with Sebastian on the CRA to do that work.
I saw that.
So, all of that is hopefully, again, the plan is to get all those done well ahead of 2030 to allow all those residents to connect before that date comes to fruition. I don't know, you know, at this point, you know, we, North, you know, North Sebastian is the other one. I mean, that was the one we just got grant funding for last year. So, that one's, you know, lagging behind those others. I mean, that probably, we'll probably get that RFP out maybe mid-year next year with the hope of, again, trying to get that accomplished before 2030. I don't know that if we were to get any additional grant funding, we would be actually able to get projects done in time before 2030 if we got grant funding this year or next year. I mean, we're talking five years now, six, four years almost before 2030's looming. You know, it takes time to get projects done, it takes time to get procurement done. I just don't know that, you know, I think what we've got in the hopper right now is likely what we're gonna get done before 2030 and that's the reality of what we're dealing with and so...
That's kind of my question. In other words, a neighborhood out on State Road 60 West that's still in the back, my neighborhood off of 43rd Avenue. I mean, unless I got all my neighbors that came to you today, say, "Hey, we want sewer in, I guess you could do it now," but if I, you know, I'm waiting to get this notice from the county, we're talking years, right? To get stuff done for stuff that's like...
Absolutely. We're talking a long time. I mean, again, where's funding gonna come from? And there's two options. It's, well, I guess there's three options theoretically, through our fees and our rates and our rate structure, through grants and loans, or loans, which we would have to pay back through grants, or through assessments. And the assessment is the cost of installing all that public infrastructure is put back on the homeowner and the homeowner has to bore the entire cost. And so, if you looked at that initial pro forma that Howard had put together, as you get down and up in complexity and infrastructure needs, those costs range close to $100,000 to $150,000 for one person to pay for all of that. And so, by applying for grants and getting grants, we're reducing that cost significantly because we're not having to assess those properties. But without that, we don't have the funding. I mean, either we go and we build the infrastructure and again, that cost is borne by the entire community, or we do assessments and, you know, the assessments are a challenge because that's a huge cost and even if you spread that out over, that's a mortgage for some people. $150,000 spread out over five years is, you know, a huge expense. So, you know, most people can't afford that if anybody can. So, you know, we've got grants and we've gotten approval to move forward with those projects and we believe that the offset and the in-kind contribution of that 25% from the county is necessary to, you know, one, to get the grant. It was part of the grant proposal. We had to provide an in-kind contribution. That in-kind contribution is that 25% that yes, is the county's contribution to that project, but that project ultimately benefits the community, the lagoon and that economic driver for the county.
So, Sean, in the short term though, you're asking the board today to approve these in concepts because they would still have to come back in the form of amendments to our existing ordinances or adopting a new ordinance that would, you know, flush these out in more detail.
Perhaps, yes. I don't know that we need, I mean, I guess that's a legal question. I don't know if we would need an ordinance to do some of that. We certainly would, I guess, if we were gonna go down the path of, you know, these base charges because the, you know, the way that our ordinance reads now, we're supposed to be metering homes, but I don't know that we need to change the ordinance for some of the other stuff. We're just asking to waive, you know, waive fees and, you know...
And I was looking at your board item because I see that, I mean, to me, it seems like their board would be conceptually approving these approaches and we would get an opportunity to kind of shake out, work with you on how they would be, you know, to look at all of our codes and our resolutions and make sure that we don't need to change something. I mean, to me, that's what I saw when I saw this item, so...
Okay.
Not trying to stop progress.
Mr. Chair, could we also ask the Mr. Administrator to maybe draft a letter to our Senator and our Representative just so we can check the box that in fact, we had this discussion?
This should definitely be a priority at legislative day. There you go. Come up and say, "Hey, what are we doing?" Sean, I guess what I'm asking is...
Make an impact and make...
Not everybody in the county is gonna be done by 2030. They don't have to come up with the money in the next three to four years. A lot of them may have to, but some, but the ones you have on the queue are gonna keep you busy until then. Some people don't need to be concerned about paying for this till 2035 or how's that work?
No.
I don't think we need to be sending out anything that says that.
The way the legislation reads today, the people that are on septic systems within the BMAP, theoretically by 2030, because that's the date that's out there today, by July 1st of 2030, either are gonna have to connect or modify their system to be an enhanced nutrient removal system. So, they're either spending money to connect or they're spending money to modify their system. So, they're spending money one way or the other by 2030, whether they're spending it to connect to sewer and central sewer, or they're spending it to modify their system. With that looming date, residents within the Basin Management Action Plan for the Indian River Lagoon are going to be required to spend money one way or the other.
Well, I'm just thinking logistically and I could be wrong. If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. You're gonna be competing with everybody in the state for pipes, for materials, for contractors to lay the pipes in the ground that need to be done or even if there's pipes there, there's still a lot of work to be done. When do people get their bill? I guess, am I making any sense? In other words...
That's why I think the projects that we have in the hopper now are basically what we will get accomplished before 2030.
Right, but what if...
I don't believe that we will be able to do any, we won't be able to handle any additional projects to enable, so either we're dealing with the existing ones that could connect today, so those projects are, again, going to that pro forma, the ones more complex that need infrastructure installed. That's what we're talking about with the grants. There are existing homeowners today that based off of existing infrastructure could connect and so, what we're asking is two things, which is allowing us to basically require those who could connect today to connect by saying, "Hey, you have an existing infrastructure, you're budding a sewer line, you have water, you could connect today." And so, we're asking to basically say, "Look, you need to connect." And then, the other part of that is, we've got these grants to install the infrastructure that allows now those homeowners who, you know, today couldn't connect, but to connect now, that they would connect. And again, those five projects that we've got going on now, I believe are all that we're gonna be able to accomplish come 2030. And so, beyond that, if you don't have existing infrastructure or we're not doing a project, then yeah, you either work with your community and figure out your own assessment if you want, you wait for the options, or you move forward with enhanced nutrient removal system. That's the options available today and the way the legislation is written today, those are your options available. And, I mean, I don't know how else to put it.
You explained it. If there's a connection right there, you're gonna, we're saying you need to connect by 2030.
Do we have to add in the cost of the courthouse to house all the liens?
Yeah.
We can't ignore the, you're talking about an impact of about $20,000 a house?
Well, I mean, the thing is, if they do have to do the enhanced nutrient removal system, that, that's not us. We have no involvement with that whatsoever.
And there's no financing options and there's no grant options and there's no any kind of any options at all with that.
Right.
That's totally on you and your plumbing provider.
So, here's, putting this into perspective, we think roughly with these new projects, we'll be able to connect, what Howard, about?
260.
260 homes and businesses with the CRA included in that number. And then you have roughly, as I mentioned up there earlier, maybe another 600 that could connect today. So, of the 28,000 by 2030, we roughly think we could connect maybe 1,000 homes between now and 2030. 27,000 homes are gonna need to go to an enhanced nutrient removal system and they're gonna have to spend that money, that has no bearing on the utility whatsoever. I mean, that, and probably doesn't have any bearing on you as commissioners, other than your residents within the community are gonna have to spend money.
We're gonna hear it.
And so, but that's a state mandate, so I don't, you know...
Every day.
That date is looming, again, that's a 2030 date and that's what we're trying to do is as much as we can, people who could connect today, get them to connect and build the infrastructure to allow additional residents to connect. And beyond that, I mean, our hands are tied and I, again, I don't know how that's gonna happen. I don't know what the state's gonna do. I don't know what DEP's gonna do and how they're gonna handle that, but that's for them to determine, not for us to be involved with that, so...
There's an option Sean mentioned briefly and that is for properties, for example, you know, small communities or street of homes, that's not going to have sewer available to them by the mandate and upgrading is their only option. There's another option and that is for them to band together and serve as their own private developer and extend the sewer to them and they could look at that and the average cost per property and compare that to if they were to individually upgrade to the enhanced nutrient reducing system. That is a potential option. They would just be serving as their own private developer, extending the sewer main, obviously would have to meet our standards and at the completion of that project would be to turn the assets over to us.
Can we make sure that we tell everybody this is a state mandate?
How much insulation is that...
Can we be clear on that?
You feel cooler, warmer? I mean, this is a tremendous impact.
I mean, I think the idea and concept is absolutely fabulous. It's gonna protect the lagoon and do what we need to do and get the BMAPs right, get the nitrogen and phosphorus in order and all that sort of stuff and I think it's needed. I'm a guy that's a lagoon guy, grew up on it, still go out in it. We need to do whatever we can, plus it's gonna, other plus is the environment. It's just about what I said at the beginning, it's just lagoon, I think that we're gonna get pushed back.
Anybody else have any discussion for staff? If not, we do have a limited public due to weather and endurance, but you're here. Would anyone like to speak on this great endeavor and topic?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Attorney, John County Administrator, thank you. Great presentation, Sean, Howard, you guys did a great job. Learning all of that stuff, obviously, City of Sebastian is the home to about 10,000 to 11,000 of these septic tanks, as you all are fully aware. Just a couple of things that I just wanted to bring, you know, note to, they've mentioned it numerous times, that we have an interlocal agreement for the Sebastian CRA, that project to get done. Little bit of concern, seeing the slide up here today and seeing it in the packet, Slide 17, had the date pushed out to 26, 27 for construction. You all attended, groundbreaking a few weeks ago in Sebastian, I think it was September 24th. So, we'd like to see kind of that ground actually breaking with the project going forward here in the near future, instead of seeing it kind of showing as it was on the graph in 26, 2026 and 2027. So, that's one concern that we have. Another that we have, and this is more of a request and, you know, I've had the discussion with Mr. Takanich and quite a bit on this already, comes down to in regards to the impact fees. So, the city, we were awarded an FDIP grant for about $3.6 million to assist the private side infrastructure on the CRA project. So, with that, our plan is to obtain whatever is required for any easements, which I believe is going well with Sean's assistance and Utilities Department, our staff have been working for any easements that we may need to obtain, but then to allow and facilitate our residents and property owners within the CRA so that they have to pay as little as possible for this project. That's your goal in this and that's the city's goal as well in this project. And with that, the only thing we've kind of run into a little bit of a problem with is the impact fees. So, in our, in our local agreement, there was the waiver of the connection fees and in looking at that, connection fees based on the slides that were showing up here, it looks like connection fees actually cost more than impact fees. However, DEP grant will not pay the impact fee. So, our residents, we're waiving a fee that DEP will cover, which is the connection fee. DEP will pay that portion and we're waiving it with disagreement. However, they won't pay the impact fee, which is gonna require residents to have to pay the impact fee. So, knowing that we can't kind of eliminate the impact fee, what my request today is to continue to evaluate this and see if there's some creative way that we can look at this and maybe the connection fee can offset the impact fee if that's possible or something of that nature because we know from the grant funding, we can get the connection fee paid. We just can't get the impact fee paid. So, if that was possible, then at the end of the day, if we were able to work something out and be creative with that, it would basically be zero cost to the property owners in the CRA, which would allow them all to facilitate the connection. Sean stated it very well that, you know, we are required to have a certain percentage of connections within that area for the grant funding to be eligible. So, we are going to be pushing, once we kind of get the grant, all the documents signed and everything finalized, the city, we will be taking ordinance to our council to support mandatory connection, to support the county's efforts for mandatory connection within the CRA, obviously with the grant funding effect that help with that. So, that's all I have. Thank you all for your support and your partnership on the Sebastian CRA, interlocal agreement and the connection there in septic to sewer and we look forward to continuing to work with you all. Thank you.
Brian, you just mentioned something about September. We all got together and stood there and we were by the riverfront. We took a picture with some shovels and there was a backhoe.
We took a picture with some shovels, and there was a backhoe behind us. Where is that now?
The backhoe? It was the county backhoe, I believe.
Was it county backhoe?
Yes, sir.
Is it in storage? Because I just want to know why we all met.
No, it's being utilized. It's something that we utilize every day.
Oh, we utilizing it there? That's...
We're not utilizing it there yet. And I mentioned this early on, we are still waiting on infrastructure.
Why did we take that picture?
We are still waiting on infrastructure to start doing the work. Once we get the infrastructure, we fully can start. And I know Brian was concerned about what was in the presentation. If you notice, we did move that time up. Sorry, Brian, the old presentation showed it moved out a little bit. But we intend to get that started and have that project completed within the year. So, you know, we're ready to go. We just need to get the infrastructure and the materials in place.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. When we all talked, and I believe, is John here? When we talked, when we went up to Sebastian and we had talked about this project, somebody was getting the materials and somebody was providing labor. And then I saw the equipment, and that all went away? And we talked about July 1, and then we had to move it a little bit. It's now October. You mean to tell me that the backhoe did not pull any soil at all yet?
It has not, no. We have not been able to do any work yet.
And we're talking about these kind of projects? I'm at a loss for words. I thought that we were going to be doing that. I was excited that day. Nice.
What are they going to dig up and put in if they don't have the pipes to do it?
No, no, no.
I mean, they can go and they're going to...
We've ordered the infrastructure and the pipes. We just haven't got it yet.
The ILAs contemplated, I think, utilities starting to work on the project. There was engineering and other stuff that needed to happen post the concept plan that was attached to the ILA, and they've been coordinating back and forth with the City of Sebastian, also that we had to get to obtain the easements. I mean, I think you just heard Brian saying they've been working together. Obviously, we want to, they want to see it accelerated, yes. And Sean's just saying.
Accelerated, just start it. Oh.
We can't start it without the materials to start it. You know, you can't go dig a hole and then wait to have the pipe, you know, show up months later and install the pipe. So, I mean, once we get the materials, we intend to start.
Well, I was told the materials were ordered.
We ordered the materials, and we ordered the materials. Unfortunately, I talked to Duke, one of my managers earlier this week, and we ordered the materials a long time ago. I'm not sure why we haven't gotten it, if there's delays, and we're looking into that. But we just haven't gotten the materials yet to actually start the work, and we don't want to dig in advance of that. So we're moving and we're progressing, and we continue to pursue easements and getting those in place. And there are things that are being done to move the project forward, but we can't go and dig until we actually have the materials to install, so.
I live up there. I've been looking for the backhoe for a while. You know, I just pass there every day. I know there's no activity, okay? I asked a question, I knew the answer to. But by the same token, if it is supply line related, if that's what you're saying, that that's the only thing that's holding this up.
That's what's holding us up right now.
Is not getting those pipes. We get those pipes, they're going to start trenching out.
I've talked to staff, and we intend to start doing work once we get material.
Not beating it up, just...
Understood.
Now, and look at the scale that we're talking about. This is a handful of buildings. Wow. Okay.
Come on, Judy.
One down.
She wasn't sure we were finished. Kind of stiff from sitting so long. And I'm also a little overwhelmed at the whole discussion, but I kept writing notes down that I'm just going to be disorganized and trying to mention to you. But one thing I did get a confirmation while I was sitting through the meeting about the number of aerobic treatment units that have already been installed in Indian River County by the Health Department, and it's about 1,000. So there's been 1,000 people whose septic system has failed, and when they go to apply for the permit with the Health Department, if sewer lines are not available, they have to fork out for these more expensive systems. Now, there was, and I just got this as an email, and I don't know all the details, but I think there's something about some of them were older and maybe not as effective as the new ones they recommend now, but regardless, the price is there. So I know you guys don't like the word loan, but there are state revolving funds that can help expedite this septic to sewer program should you feel like you need to move out into more areas more quickly, and it could be paid back on taxes. Other areas have done that. The Locksahatchee River has had a really comprehensive program, and they've gotten rid of all their septic systems, and they charge the homeowners back at a low interest rate over 20 years, just FYI. I like this Sebastian project, the fact that it's cooperative between Sebastian and the county, you know, that both people got chunks of money and went in together. That's awesome. I think John's point about not losing sight of which areas are the most important areas to connect, like, don't forget about the Bilkey, Shulkey, Biddle, Stoddard project, and the fact that they prioritize the neighborhoods, and Sean's doing that. He's addressing the priority neighborhoods first, and, you know, people can't connect if the line's not in the ground. I just, I really came here to tell you a little bit about the Clean Water Coalition septic to sewer project that we're doing with the City of Vero Beach, and why it came about, and I have information to share, and I'll be glad to leave it with you. If you don't want to hear about it, Joe, you could just say...
What?
I don't know, you rolled your eyes. I thought maybe you weren't interested. Okay. Anyway.
What did you say? That I was not interested?
I just got that, I saw your face. I just thought that was what you were telling me, that you, I'm spending too much time.
No.
Okay, thank you. The City of Vero Beach opted to go with the step system, as was mentioned in the presentation. And so Rob Bolton, and I have to give a shout out to Keith Druitt. Keith Druitt's the Vice President of Clean Water, and he was really the brains behind this because Rob Bolton, you know, got grant funding to run the step lines throughout the entire city. And so the lines are in place. Well, that's the first step in having people connect is first the lines have to be there. So the lines are in place for the step, but even after this time, I think they started in 2017 putting the lines in, we only have a 50% connection rate in the city. And so Keith Druitt's idea was that a lot of the people that live within the city limits are lower income people, and they really can't afford to connect. So what are we going to do about that? So we devised a program with the cooperation of the city through ordinance, by the way, which provides an incentive program for low income people to connect. And it's been a really interesting process working through this. We started it as a pilot project using private funding. So we got funding from Clean Water Coalition, our donors, from the Indian River Land Trust donors, from the Community Foundation donors. And we had the cooperation of the Economic Opportunities Council to screen our applicants to determine who was low income. No preferential treatment. They were doing all the screening, and the City of Vero Beach passed the necessary ordinances to give extra incentive to people who qualify for our program. So it resulted in what normally could be a $15,000 connection for people. If they qualify as low income, now the cost is $575 per year for 10 years. So if you have questions about it, I'll be glad to answer. Otherwise, I'll pass out or leave these preshers and an explanation. But I think there are ways, because it sounds like, can I walk and do this at the same time? It sounds like there are ways...
Judy, you're saying it's reduced to $575?
Yep.
For you. I really was interested. I'm in pain right now. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate you.
Did John have a copy of that?
Thank you, Judy.
Yes. Please, please now, with Howard and Sean and Brian and others.
Yeah?
And this is...
Judy, what's the qualifier on this?
I'm sorry?
What's the qualifications?
Four times the federal poverty rate. So it's basically about $90,000 for, let me see, two people, about $90,000 and $130,000 for about, for a four family household.
And this is one of the financing options, Sean and Howard, you guys were talking about under that slide, correct?
Yeah, but I want to make it plain that we do not have funding for county area yet. Our, the funding that we have is promised. So we would have to apply for additional grant funding if we were going to do anything with the county. But I just wanted to point this out to you because it can be done. You can find ways to help the people you're worried about, but then the people who have the money, because there's a whole mess of people who have plenty of money, and they're still not connecting, because they don't want to. I flush the toilet, it goes away. You know, that's all they care. So there's plenty of that. And there's also people who have investments, but they don't want to sell their investments unless they're forced to. So there are those situations where people who could afford it aren't connecting, and that mandatory policy would just make them get off their duff and do it. But then you need to have a program that's going to help the people who can't afford it. Because otherwise, these targeted people we're working with are defined by United Way as being asset limited, income challenged, and employed.
Alice.
Alice people. And we played with, in the process of working through this grant with the city, which has been a really interesting process. Well, first, it was with the pilot program. We first started at two times the federal poverty level and found that that was too restrictive. So we, over time, we bumped the level up, our qualification level. So now we're at four times the federal poverty level, and that seems to be a good spot because we seem to be helping people who are like, not just working people, but also retired people who've been in their house for 30 years or longer. And their, their income just couldn't cover it. They're living month to month. So it's helping retired people and working people, and it's been an interesting process to, you know, encourage those people to get involved. And one thing about it is you have to be positive about your program. You can't be negative about it. I mean, here, if you've got sewer available, it's going to save you money. It's going to make your property values better. You know, you're obviously, you know, there's other ways to incentivize this too, through other types of ordinances. You could pass an ordinance that says the septic system has to be connected upon the sale of a home. City of Vero Beach has that ordinance in place. So the realtors are getting it, and there's money exchanging hands at the time of the sale of a home. And so that's a time when these kinds of things can come into play a little better. So those are just some examples. Happy to answer questions if anybody has any. Otherwise, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We started with a pilot program, which, you know, was a short, when we kind of were working out the processes, how people would apply and so forth. Then we, because we had a proven process, competitive bidding works. Competitive bidding works. This idea about having, you know, contractors do competitive bidding. So anyway, we were under budget, so we haven't spent all the money, so we've got an extension on that grant. And then in the meantime, we applied for a second grant from the NEP that is a federal program, and it's just to help priority area people, lower income people. So that one is in play now, and we have a year on that one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this thought? Everybody's got their own microphone.
I'm fine with everything except the waive assessments and waive fees, and I just want to get more information on that. Otherwise, I'm good with all of it, so.
So would you like to ask them to come back with some more explanation and details?
Is that doable? Can we hear a little bit more? But everything else is fine today. I mean, I don't want to hold anything up, you know, the rest of it. I don't want to hold up the rest of it.
You're asking us to come back with...
The waive assessments of property owners and the waiver reduce...
But what would we come back? I mean, are we coming back with what the cost would be? I mean, I can tell you today that the 25% is roughly between the two projects, or three projects is, you know?
You know, I'll say that, you know, Miss...
We can come back with that. I mean, certainly, we can come back with that.
I think what she's looking for is how would it be absorbed within the budget and in the current funding? Like, if you waive those, what fund or what fund is being used to pay for it?
Okay.
Somebody's going to pay for it, so.
Yeah, we just can't print money, and either can the citizen.
But everything else is fine. I don't want to hold up the rest of it, just for those two points.
How do we do that?
So, yeah, I will approve it, I guess.
I heard the county administrator and the attorney saying today that we're moving forward.
We have eight points.
But we're only moving forward on the plan, not the action. I think that's what I heard, but that's how the CRA is going. I don't know. I just, we move forward today. We're moving forward today. Regardless of how we colorize it, we're moving forward today in taking action, and the cost to the citizens, although it's been discussed that it will get further, higher later, the more we delay it, which I don't think we have a fear of delay. I don't know how we're making, we're moving forward with something that is not, not a perfect plan, not a, it's very tough to digest, and it's a high cost factor. I just don't think our citizens are able to absorb this.
So what I hear, and these were the assets we had today.
We need more work.
So what I hear was that you were asking, or you were suggesting to approve everything without G and...
E and G.
E and G.
The two waivers, basically. So I just wanted...
And that we would come back with more information on those.
A is already done. According to town, it's, we have that policy in code.
Oh, A is done?
It is. I mean, we have mandatory connections. Yeah.
A is kind of done in the sense that we have mandatory connection requirements, and the department can require it and...
It's supporting following through with the state mandate, is essentially what we're asking.
Yeah, so, I mean, the vehicle is in our code already. We wouldn't have to do anything. I guess it's G, lessing it.
Counsel, so the conveyance is, because if your septic fails, you have to connect if available. Counsel, so the conveyance is, because if your septic fails, you have to connect if available. If, if.
If available, right.
Available.
Absolutely.
So it's not.
We aren't going to make someone something that's not available.
It's compelling, it's not mandatory.
It would only be mandatory if it was available.
This mandatory is, everybody's doing it.
No.
No.
No, this is only connecting if it's available.
That's in the statutory language. They must connect to a central sewer system if available, or the alternative is, is the enhanced nutrient-reduced OTC.
Right, and we can't force anybody to connect that doesn't have sewer available. So this would be if they have it available.
If available, and what is the definition of available, Sean?
If it abuts the line, and that's kind of what we had up on the map, if you go back. I mean, those are the ones that we would have. And so we would be looking at those that abut either a force main or a gravity line today. And again, we need to ground through some of those. I mean, some of that is information through GIS. And so I was mentioning before, is we would need to go through and determine really what's available. And then we would, we would do outreach. I mean, we're not going to do this without reaching out to the communities, reaching out to the homeowners, letting them know what we're doing, letting them understand the costs. And then, once we've had that, you know, we would send the letter basically saying you have a year to connect.
So the definition of available is if it abuts a gravity or a force main line?
Mm-hmm.
And the authorizing of sending out a mandatory connection notice in coordination with outreach efforts? Outreach would happen first, so they're not going to blindly get a mandatory connection without any concept of what that is? And this is not something that's mandatory for everybody within the entirety of the county? That's not what this is.
Right, we would, we would be doing outreach to those specifically that abut a line and let them know that, hey, you currently abut a line, there's mandatory connections. What does that mean? What are the costs? Kind of what we've done with the communities that we're doing construction in or we're proposing to do construction in. It would be a similar type of a meeting. We'd hold a couple of opportunities for people to come and meet with us and lay out what that means to them. So they're not just getting, as you say, not just getting a letter blindly in the mail that says you have to connect.
No, I, I forget it. It's not a blanket mandate. However, by 2030, all will be connected to sewer, but per legislation state that everyone will either be connected or they'll be using the hybrid system, having gone with that expense. Now, one minute. County Administrator, you just built a home, didn't you?
Not too long ago, yes.
And you actually put in the hybrid system?
Certainly, the enhanced nutrient-reduce, yes.
And how, what was the cost factor? That's with two mandatory inspections too, right?
Yeah, it's actually $12, and I think it's for two years is the inspection fee. And then there's an annual permit with, I think, with the health department. But I think the cost was about 16 grand.
Okay, so, same mandatory. You're going to be incurring that cost or more infrastructure cost, either way. Kind of sounds more than compelling, it sounds mandatory. Something's going to be done. You're going to be, you're going to be spending at least $20,000 either way. It's your choice. How do you want to spend it? And if you spend it one way, and then we have connection, and that system fails, you're going to have to connect to the sewer as well. Okay. Then you got to remove the septic tank or fill it in with sand or whatever.
You got to abandon it.
You have to abandon, yeah.
You have to.
It's going to cost more than what I did, I had raw land.
If it's EBC, it gets pulled. If it's cement, it gets filled or crushed, right?
Well, depending on the lot size, you may have to completely remove it. Because I can tell you, there's more cells required than what exists for a conventional system. And I have a pump, a mini pump station, if you will.
They're larger than the existing, and so if you're on a small lot with a septic and leach field, you're going to have to remove the existing one. You cannot abandon it. They won't have enough space to abandon it and put it in.
My drain field's much larger than my neighbor's.
And is that going to be an infrastructure cost or a homeowner expense?
That's a private.
It's a private owner expense.
Yeah.
And then there's also the biohazard that might.
If they connect to us, they have to abandon the existing septic tank. And that usually includes, you know, busting in the lid, filling it with sand or some material and, you know, covering it over, so.
Blast it out to clean it up, then crush it, whatever process they use.
Yep.
Sounds like we're for a big ride. It is what it is.
So Sean, just so if we look at this list, the direction that you need on these recommendations that is, you know, to move forward, it's B, C, D.
H and J.
G, which is just the IRC permits, not anybody else. And then H, well, H is just endorsing, and so it's really J. So B, C, D, G, J.
Yes. And we will come back with something on E.
On E? Because that's the big ticket item there.
So what we're hearing is, I think Commissioner Moss was alluding to, you know, we wanted to remove certain things from this for now. What we're talking about is no, no commitment action today, but we want to have this come back with changes? Or just eliminate it and move forward?
Well, you want us to come back.
Just come back with more.
On item E, the big issue, the one about the 25%.
Item E only?
Yes, please.
So staff is requesting the recommendation would be to move forward with or approve items B, C, D, G, and J, and work with the county attorney's office and county administration to effectuate those changes as it relates to the, any codes, resolutions, or whatever the case might be.
Well-stated, John.
Good playbook.
Joe, you have anything?
And I'll amend that, by the way. And E, come back on the item for waiving the assessments of property and infrastructure covered up by grants.
Yeah.
I was. I heard you, I was just reading over the Senate.
Nobody did.
House Bill 13.
I think the consideration of legislative session is important.
And it says, if central system sewer is available, property owners must connect. What the state law says. What is that? I didn't hear.
That's what we've been debating.
I didn't hear it.
It says right here, it says.
Okay, John, will you restate?
That's what it says.
Sure.
Please.
We're done debating it. That's what it says. If it's available, if it's available right there for you.
If available.
Right, and we've gone over the definition of available.
Right.
And all we're talking about, which are county responsibility, is sewer connection. We have nothing to do with whoever may have to put in a fancy system. So that's kind of where we are. And we already have some mandatory language, so Sean can work with that. And what is, so what is staff asking? Can you summarize that?
Staff is recommending that the board approve to move forward with items B, C, D, G, J, come back with E, and work with the county attorney's office and county administration to effectuate those changes as it relates to ordinance and ensuring consistency with resolutions and other policies.
That, I will be happy to make that motion. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any discussion?
Is there, is there any danger in waiting 100 days and seeing how the session handles this?
I mean, I don't, I don't see the need to wait 100 days. I don't, whatever they do, well, this might change, and, you know, it might stop raining, but it's not looking like that's going to happen. But I just, I don't see what it hurts us to do this. And if it does change, we can always come back and readjust any of our ordinances like we do every year after legislative session.
I'm just wondering too about the flip side. You know, do we, when they go into session, look bad because we haven't done anything? With this, we're doing something. Yeah, we can change it, we can amend it, but we're doing something. And that was one of your points today, right? I mean, you know, we need to do something. And that helps you in regard to obtaining funding, looking into funding. You know, we've begun to move forward on this. And I, you know, I understand what you're saying. It's very awkward, you know, it really is. I feel that way about it. That's why I want to discuss E a little more. But, you know, to Susan's point, you know, I think we, you know, we need to, we just need to be moving forward. I don't think there's a harm in moving forward. And there could be a harm in waiting 100 days in that they look at us and say, well, they're not doing anything.
I just, I agree. I don't see what the concern is not waiting to look at this current legislation to see if there's a change. When you say, if we're not doing something, every jurisdiction is dealing with this. We're not alone, and it gets well-discussed. I think, I think if we move forward so that we're eligible for some grants, this all could be changed. I'm speaking on behalf of the homeowners, the residents. I mean, do you own a home in New River County?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I want to know about E.
You know, you're.
Without discussing.
We're all impacted, they're all impacted. And it's tremendous.
But what we're doing today isn't going to preclude us in any way, shape, or form for advocating on a legislative level to either lessen some of those impacts, have a more reasonable discussion about what the true impacts are of this financially to residents, asking the state, I mean, I think the governor put out last month that the state has record reserves. So maybe they can carve some of that out and create a grant process for the people that need the new septic system, since that's totally on the private side. And I think that's something that we totally should be advocating for and working on. If the state is sitting on that much money and they're asking for cities and counties to put some of our money back on the street, then maybe they can put some of theirs back on the street and help out. That's where I feel like we need to be. But waiting to see what they're going to do, I would agree that I don't think this precludes that. It's not going to hurt us. I think it has the potential, because of the grants, to hurt us, that we might not be able to keep some of those grants and have to put them back. But I do completely agree that we need to be engaged, all of us, with the legislators this year because we heard from them at the legislative luncheon that they didn't really think that there was going to be any discussion on a state level about this whole process. And it's probably the one state issue that we hear the most about and get the most concerns about. And to all of y'all's points, we're going to be the ones that are going to be run out of town, not the state, even though this is coming down through us from the state. So, you know, I would, I know this is part of all the legislative stuff that is being talked about and all, everybody's legislative packages. So I don't think this precludes it. In fact, I think this whole conversation is an illustration of why all municipal and county governments need to be in Tallahassee talking about what they're hearing from our residents.
Perhaps my level of risk-taking is, on the behalf of the citizens, is far, far less. I have the expectations of what can happen, what may happen, what might happen. And I feel very uncomfortable about gambling on the opportunity that may arise as opposed to will arise. So with that in mind, I believe that we should yield to the legislation, even though we're advised that it's probably not on the radar. We're, again, we're not alone. There are many jurisdictions that are confronted with the same challenges. And the economy is what the economy is, and the people having the ability to have to take this cash upfront and, you know, treat it as just another cost of doing business, wedding cost, a mortgage cost, a brand-new car cost. It's a tremendous amount. It's a burden on our citizens. I think we need to look at a better solution code than what we have. Excepting today, what it is, we're moving forward with the canvas that's going to be a pretty tough painting to be able to hang on the wall. Thank you.
We've known this since 2023 that this was coming. It's here, it's time to have a plan, it's time to be on the proactive side. It's time to let Sean and his crew get busy. It's for us to get with Tallahassee and get with the legislators and find out what's going on. I mean, we could, we could beat this horse to death, but we've known for two years this was coming. It's here, it's getting closer. We knew it was going to take time logistically to get this done. We don't have to be happy about it personally, but Tallahassee's told us we had to do this. And I mean, I am just like y'all. I'm concerned about how much our residents have to pay. If we can do what we can do and the state can finally realize that they have to pay for something, we'd be a lot better off. So I'll leave it with that.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the one thing I will add is I know two legislative delegations ago, we brought this up, and we were kind of advised that, you know, everybody's known this was coming. But I think now, with the information that's been presented, I mean, the big issue is the timeframe, the deadline. Because right now, the deadline's there. It, by 2030, you know, if sewer's available, you have to connect or you have to put the new system in. That's there. And the other component, what was mentioned, it was highly unlikely at the time, at least thought that there was any potential state funding, other than maybe additional septic sewer grants. But having a plan and having the ability of some momentum moving forward and using maybe this presentation with what you all approved, along with what's happening at the Integrated Master Plan, I think the state, one of the comments I heard, they want to see action on behalf of the communities. And this is, I think this is the foundation on which we can build upon to make the case to maybe provide some relief in terms of that deadline, especially for those communities that are working towards completing it. Because Sean's comments earlier was, with all the projects that we have right now, that's going to take us up to 2030, no new additional, and by then we'll have 1,000 homes. I mean, that's the message, the story that we need to be sharing with the legislature. We're working on this, we've got a plan, we've got various recommendations that we're adopting. But even with all that, we're going to get 1,000 homes. So there's got, at some point, you know, there's got to be, you know, there's got to be some rationale injected in this deadline because it's just not, it's just not feasible, even if we had the half-billion, billion dollars, to move it forward quicker than we can right now. I mean, we're still a year away from the minimum, a year away from, about a year away from the Integrated Master Plan, you know, being completed. So it's not a, it's not an overnight exercise, you know, engineering exercise. It's very complex, there's modeling, there's several factors that need to be assessed. And so that's, we are doing that. And I think this helps, you know, further tell our story to, you know, both our local legislators, but the delegation, you know, the delegation and others as well. Because I agree, we're not the only one facing this. But the question becomes, I mean, I think the comment was made, what have we done? And I think this shows what we're doing.
All right. Well, we have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, three to.
Motion passes three to two with Vice Chairman Laura and myself dissenting.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Let me take a brief recess. Guys have been waiting a whole morning, it's just.
Good things taken.
Yes. Well, you're great people, so. Sounds like the end. You're a working man.
Well.
Meeting will now be called back to order, and we're on to county attorney matters. Item 14A Alpha, which is the disposition of property requested to River Boat Club POA. Counselor, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Susan Prado, Deputy County Attorney on behalf of the County Attorney's Office. Yes, today, I'm bringing to you a proposal to dispose of some property. The request was made by the River Boat Property Owner Association. They are the property owner association, or I should say, their developer was the ones that initially transferred this property to us historically back in the plat with some language, some interesting language that it came with, where it reserved to itself a right to construct docks and other water-dependent amenities over and above the submerged lands within that area that was dedicated to us under the right-of-way back in 1995, when this plat was recorded. Since then, as you all are well aware, we have had a license agreement with the Property Owners Association that was entered into also in 1995. That license agreement was modified in 1999. And now, here we are today, and the association does pay us an annual fee, if you will, to kind of oversee. In essence, we're basically just the middleman in something that they are maintaining, keeping track of, and taking care of on their own. To my understanding, they perform all the maintenance, they're the ones that own the dock facilities and own the everything that's there. So, the request was kind of for us to go ahead and relinquish this section of property, not the road, it's just the little area that abuts the road, the actual, it's some submerged land and the stuff that's there on the edge to them, so that they can go ahead and be the rightful owner of it, instead of having us in the middle as a middleman. I believe this would bring several benefits to the county. A, I think I listed out in my staff report, it would also help alleviate some staff time that is spent on this, that could be spent on other items, because the fee that I believe is collected isn't sufficient to cover sometimes all the staff time that has gone into this item. And also, I think it would help them so that they could go ahead and keep their boats and their stuff up to date as they do themselves. The method in order to turn this over would be through our actual code, through Chapter 106, which we adopted. We adopted that pursuant to Flores Statute 125.35. What it would require for us to do if the board chooses to move forward is to declare this little section of property surplus, and then go ahead and transfer it via quitclaim deed and approve the resolution that's been attached here, too. There was a copy of the plat that was attached here, too, for your reference and for your convenience, so you can see what it is that we are talking about, as well as a quitclaim deed in the resolution. The Property Owners Association representatives are present, and this time, I would like to ask that they come forward so that you can hear from them if you have any questions from them.
Thank you, I look forward to that opportunity as well. We would please the board. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you for your patience.
Bob Webster.
And Charles King.
Charles King, thank you.
Well, you've been great stewards of your facility for many years. There are some changes that have to be made to ensure that you continue to do so. Do you have any comment today as far as the changes that are about to take place? I understand you've had communication with the attorney?
No, we're just happy to get to this point. Like you said, for almost 30 years, I guess we've been doing what we were supposed to do. I understand the county not wanting to be in the dock leasing business. As you said, it's taken up a lot of time, probably worth much more than you've gotten from us. And we'd be happy to move forward and just take over the responsibility and do what we've been doing and continue to do it. It's an important asset to our community, that's why we bought there. And we would appreciate it if we could just continue with our lives the way they've been. And we'll continue to do our duty as stewards of that area, you know.
And once again, for Counselor Two as well, the structures will still be exposed to any building requirements or structural application, renovation. However, it will be privately owned. We are releasing the ownership. The good people of Indian River County will not be in the leasing business. The good people of Indian River County will not be in the leasing business.
That's, sorry. That's correct. So currently, we don't actually own the structures even on them. We just own the land that's underneath. So yes, what we would essentially be doing is at least relinquishing the rights to the underlying land back to them.
Riparian and mainland?
Yes, just that little sliver there on the mainland that's right next to the riparian area or the underlying water. Yes, sir.
Thank you. You gentlemen are obviously ready for the challenge. Outstanding. You want any comment?
Sir.
No, your copy is a lot, that's good. All right, anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Is it communal dock, I guess? Anyone in the POA can use the dock or docks, is that correct?
Yes, there's twenty houses in our community. Nine houses are not on the water at all, and they're each, they each have a space down there. And then there's other homes that have spaces there, but it's a community dock where anybody could go on it. It's fenced in per our agreement with the county. So only really homeowners or their guests are supposed to use the facility. And that's how we've managed it.
Okay, that sounds great. I mean, there haven't been problems?
No.
With neighbors, among neighbors? Nice.
Yeah.
That's, that's great. It's a tribute to you, I guess.
Yeah, it's worked out good, and thank you for your time and effort on this. I know, like, a lot of times we're spent, we appreciate it.
I'm happy to support it, I can't make a motion, though.
Mr. Chair, good stuff.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second to support Counselor's actions for these fine gentleman? Anything further?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Very much, I'll congratulate you.
Thank you.
It was worth the wait.
Thank you.
I guess. All right, next is fourteen B. It is an amendment number two to the service agreement for Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network for Administration to Opioid Settlement Proceeds. Thank you for coming up north.
Basic.
Yes.
And I'll just kick this off, Mr. Chair, if I may. This is just an amendment two to our agreement with Southeast Behavioral Health Network, and they administer our opioid money, and it would... So this is amendment two, we'd still have the same relationship with them, which we're required to have because of the size of our county, and we're still paying them the five percent fee. But there is a new twist to it, and I appreciate Amanda's weathering this whole meeting so she could be available and also carry from Thrive, because there is a new process that they're working on through the Public Safety Coordinating Council where there would be new recipients for funding, and I wanted them to be able to explain that to you.
Absolutely. What we're doing is, we have released an request for applications that would allow providers or government entities within Indian River County, or who provide services within the Indian River County, to apply for some of the opioid funds. They may have to meet several requirements. What they are proposing must be approved as part of the opioid settlement agreement with the state of Florida, and it should, it will be given priority if it meets the needs assessments that was completed, a need that's within the needs assessment that was completed by Thrive. So that was, those were attachments that were included in the RFA, and anybody who's applying should be doing so within those limitations. Our due date for that is October tenth. We've received some applications, and we continue to answer questions, and, you know, to make ourselves available to anybody that has any questions who are looking to make a bid for some of the funding. As of the funding that was previously approved, that is all in contracts, we got that all in the contracts. I submitted a report of the things that we have been doing, I'm not sure if you all got to see that, but everyone that was previously approved, I think all of them still have funding that they haven't used. So they're still, we just have continued to roll over those agreements into the next fiscal year to allow them to expend their approved amount of funding.
And I wanted to just remind the board that, again, this gets well discussed at Public Safety Council as well, and just want to remind all that without Southeast Behavioral, we do not qualify for a lot of the funding. And in addition, this board has committed funding for additional resources so that Southeast Behavioral can manage and work through all of the granting process. That's all correct?
Yes.
So I do have a question about that grant process. Are you, I mean, because who's making the decision on who's getting the grant dollars? Because I was under the impression that those dollars, while they are passing through you, they are coming to Indian River County, and so I had assumed that ultimately the Public Safety Council and our organization internally is who's making the determination on where those dollars are going, but hearing from you today, it sounds like you're the one at Southeast Behavioral Network is making those decisions.
The applications are going to be coming to us, we will be presenting to the Tre- or not Treasure Coast, Indian River Opioid Task Force. They will be making the decisions and doing the numbers about who, and then making that recommendation to the Public Safety Coordinating Council. Now, we will be, obviously, anybody, if there's somebody that Ann Burner, our CEO, says that we cannot contract with, that's something that we would have to deal with outside of that, but if, through the process, if they meet the requirements, they plan for a priority, they go before the board, they get in the finalists, and that is the recommendation to support them, then, I mean, that's going to come through the Public Safety Coordinating Council to the, through the board.
Okay, and then the...
Well, and I'd want clarification on this point, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Because, and I appreciate you giving us the report, and I included it so the board members would have it, and so it basically says you'll lead the review and selection process for the next round of funding recipients in partnership with the opioid task force, and the finalists will be reported to the Public Safety Coordinating Council at the November twenty-first meeting, and then in our new contract amendment, it says that you will inform us of new recipients. So I did, I did want to have this discussion, because the way that I'm reading this is this, this is a process that will not involve our board. Is that correct?
I think the thought was that if the Public Safety Coordinating Council presented it to the board, that there wouldn't be a need for it to necessarily be approved by the board. If the Public Safety Coordinating Council approved the RFAs, or whoever, maybe there's five, I'm going to say there was five the first time, I'm going to say five this time, and if that was the recommendation, that the recommendation would be made to the board, was our understanding of it. So if there's a need for a different language to be adopted, that's something we can discuss, but from my understanding of it from our last public safety, now I wasn't there, I was just advised, but I wrote the RFA so that we could get it rolling, because there was some concern that the money was just sitting there and not being put into place, so we immediately took it into action, because we don't want you to think that we're not doing something appropriately to get the RFA out. If that is a misinterpretation, I would say, then I just need clarity in that, and that we can take it back. But I thought that the recommendation was that I would, anybody who qualified and met the requirements would go to the Treasure Coast Opioid Task Force, and they would make the recommendations of who would receive any of the funding dollars to the Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Yeah, I just, because my understanding from the beginning was you were basically the pass-through for the money. The money had to go through you guys, and that we were paying a percentage for administration of that. But other than that, all the decisions were being made locally by the Public Safety Coordinating Council, as far as how we wanted to invest our dollars in our community, because it could possibly be different than what other communities are investing their dollars in. So I just wanted to seek clarification that that was the way everybody was interpreting it, and basically, I guess, to put it very bluntly, I just wanted to know who was driving the bus. Like, is it Indian River County and the Public Safety Coordinating Council, or is it Southeast Behavioral Network?
Well, we're not finalizing any decisions without approval from the Public Safety Coordinating Council, we haven't made, and other than the approvals that you've already done and put into place, which that took us, you know, six, seven months to get put in place with just the five current approved contracts, that takes time.
Right, and those first five, I mean, as I recall, that was kind of like, we had, we were under pressure to spend the money, so we had to get something approved, but that wasn't necessarily how we wanted to invest the money over the course of twenty years solely with
Exactly.
Those groups. So I just, I just wanted clarification, because, you know, there was, the way it was written seemed to kind of block in versus give the opportunity to tweak as the needs of the community changed.
Mr. Chair, I just had one question, and I don't know if it's your safety council or Southeast. Who monitors the allocated dollars to make sure they're specifically fitted for opioid use? If you recall, years ago, that's what this was designed for, there had to be an opioid element. And who polices the agencies to ensure that they're used for those?
We are monitoring that, that's what we're doing with that five percent admin fee. Initially, when we set the contract up, we set the contract up just to let your county administer the dollars. We were just going to work with you, allow the Public Safety Council to manage the money, and we were just going to make sure that it was kind of done, and anything that fell on us was completed. You, the Board of County Commissioners, made a recommendation that we administer the funding and that we make sure that everything is completed, and that's what we have taken on, and that's what we're using that five percent admin fee for. So we're using that to monitor their, one, that the priorities that are required in the opioid settlement agreement with the State Attorney's Office is being completed, and that we're not using funding for anything outside of those approved priorities. As well, if there's submitting of documentation, submitting of financial records, we are collecting that as we go. We wrote a law of our agreements for cost reimbursement, we're requiring them to submit that to us, and we're uploading it into the ODMS system on a monthly or quarterly basis, depending on what our agreement states with those individuals. So we're monitoring that to make sure that they're using that funding for the proper, proper thing.
So Southeast, Southeast is the administrative arm, vetting all applications, the presentations are done before the Public Safety Council, and then distribution is coming to this commission for distribution.
Okay, so you want the final approval to come before the board, before anything's in contract?
Well, that's how it has in the past.
Yes, that's how it was in the past.
Sorry. It's not being proposed that way, and that's why I wanted
That's correct.
That this board make that decision, which is, I don't have an opinion about it, I just want it to, everybody to be clear that as written this amendment, it would not come to this board for decision.
Correct, and in the past, we did that
In the past, yes.
Because we were against, again, we were about four months delayed to get the process completed, and we were at the juncture of possibly losing the funding if we didn't move it forward, and that's why we had to accelerate the process. The process doesn't have to be accelerated, and this is a whole different entity, and this is, the funding is coming from a different arena.
Yeah, I mean, the recommend, I mean, there's a chance that the recommendation could be that none of the applications are appropriate. There's a chance that all of the, you know, they could be priorities that are really good, and the Treasure Coast Opioid Task, I'm not, I'm sorry, I keep doing that, there's so many opioid task force. The Indian River Opioid Task Force, that's why, you know, we want to work in conjunction with them to make sure that any of the applications that are coming, those priorities are aligned with that needs assessment and what was identified as issues in, right now, affecting Indian River County. Now, as an entity, we don't feel the need to push the entirety of the money that you have sitting out into RFAs immediately, because if you have, as a county, you have long-term goals that you want to complete, my recommendation would be to hold some of that funding. So if there is a priority that, I think one of the priorities was a centralized stabilization unit, that's a very costly endeavor. So if there's funding that needs to be withheld for something like that further on down the line, then that's, you know, a recommendation that we think needs to be made as well, and we're willing to work with that. We, we want to do what's right for Indian River County, we want to help you administer the fines, and we want to bring the services to Indian River that are going to make effective... Sorry, the word is gone for me. An effect to substance use, and that whether maybe it's prevention and not, starting at a younger age, we're going to get that out, information out there, so maybe, maybe that affects in the long run, or maybe it's making some treatment available that's not available now. I think some of the funding that was just, I just approved through Nineteenth Circuit, they sent somebody to a twenty-eight day residential program who didn't have insurance. That's the type of thing that we want to make sure is happening with this funding, those approved uses, and that's what we want to be seen done with it. But I'm happy to answer, you know, we're fully transparent, there's nothing we have to hold back, we want to do what you want us to do with the funding, and we want to work with you to make sure that we're administering it in a way that you feel comfortable with.
Can I ask a question? So the money comes to the county, Indian River County?
It comes through us, it comes to us.
Our allocation is provided to them for the purposes of administering it.
Yes, because we're the behavioral health entity for this area.
Our county is too small to be able to accept the funding.
We voted on it last time, or previously, where the money would be spent, with what agencies. So are you saying that in the future, we would not be voting on it?
The Board of County Commissioners, the way we interpreted it is that it was going to go to the Public Safety Coordinating Council.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
But then they report to us.
Right, yes, and I see.
But you're cutting that part out, is what I'm understanding?
No, no, they would still be reporting to you. It would just be not that, last time, everybody came and brought the presentations to the Board of County Commissioners, and then the board voted on who. So the recommendations would be the ones that are brought to you, not all of the proposals. So they would have to meet the criteria, they would have to do, you know, a certain degree, then they would do a presentation, the presentation is going to be scored, if they get within the realm, the recommend, they would make, the Treasure Coast Opioid Task Force, sorry, I did it again, Indian River Opioid Task Force, would make the recommendation for, we, these meet the priorities, these are who we suggest should get the funding, and they would bring that to the Public Safety Coordinating Council, who would make the vote on it.
So, but the notice of award would not happen until the board took the recommendation from the Public Safety Council?
I don't have the dates in front of me, so I'm, I think we put the notice of award out.
That's how I understand it.
That's what I wanted the board to understand.
County Commission's giving up control, I don't agree with that.
I just wanted the board to understand that.
It should be handled like CSAC, TDC, whatever the other boards that, that make, that vet grants.
Yes.
And then they make a recommendation. That recommendation comes to the county commission for final approval. The applicants don't come to us, they do all the presentations at the committee level. The committee makes a recommendation, that recommendation comes to us, and we have the final approval. That's how this should be set up. That's how I assumed it was set up, but what I'm hearing you say is that's not how it's set up, and
That's the RFA.
For me, I would like it set up that way if, moving forward, I just think we need to have some kind of oversight, we have a finite amount of money in twenty years, and it's, it's similar to every other committee, and it's not, and the Public Safety Committee is fantastic, and they should be the ones that are vetting these grants, but they recommend to us.
And well agreed, because as the Public Safety Council, they do get And well agreed, because as the Public Safety Council, they, they do get challenged. They do get scrutinized.
Right.
Okay?
This is just a, a decision that we can change the date to when the notice happens to the community. There was no, we were, we set up the RFA in a way that we thought would be the easiest and the quickest based on dates that were given to us. If, if we can withhold that date, which initially I wanted to hold it out till like February because the way this would fall would allow the applications, time to go to the opioid task force, time to go to public safety, and then turn around and come to the board. The way, the information that we were given initially, it was like you got to get this RFA out, we need to get the money out. So if that is not the case, then the only thing that we need to change within the RFA would just be the date of notice of approval and that would allow it to come to the board.
There'd be another line item under RFA finalist reported, but that would be recommended. And then there'd be a line item under there that just says Board of County Commissioner, approval, review and approval.
Yes.
And then the other question I have is, so how often are you, when you say monitoring, what type of, are they monthly, are they quarterly reports?
We're doing monthly invoices and with the type of agreements that we set up was cost reimbursement. So anything that they submit to us, we're looking at on a monthly basis. Now, there are some providers who may not have an invoice on every single month. They may have more of a quarterly type of situation, but they still have to submit the required documentation at that interval when they're requesting reimbursement. So if they're, whatever they're submitting and whatever interval they're submitting it at, that's when we're looking at it, right then and there. We're not making any payments.
So I mean, are you, but are you doing a report to the Public Safety Council saying, this is what the application said they were going to do and on a monthly basis, they're going to hit this many, you know, client touch points or they're going to have this, these are the outputs that they're supposed to have and here's where they are?
Visual outcomes.
Yeah, the measure of outcomes are in there. We ask them to be prepared to present that to the Public Safety Coordinating Council in their agreements on a quarterly basis.
Is it, so is it possible that the, I mean, is the board interested in receiving that as a courtesy copy, a copy of the quarterly reports?
I think so. Sure.
Yes, some are approved, some are declined and as far as, and some actually were enhanced when there was an appeal for additional funding. Once again, Counselor, this is, this is not regarding what is left in the next 17 years. This is the new, new funding, correct?
Yes. Right. It would be, yes, they
I, I just want that clarified because I think there's a perception that we're changing everything and the existing program and the procedure is intact and that's the way that will be. This was for the additional funding opportunity. That we would not qualify without Southeast Behavioral.
Right. So Amanda explained, and I think I understand, that you have under contract the, the providers who are currently approved by the board and you're just, and you're giving them their money and, and they're still getting their money.
Yes.
And this would be new money. And what I would recommend based on what I'm hearing from the board is in the amendment number two, that we kind of go back to the language that was in our prior amendment number one, when we have this attachment B that identifies who's going to get the money, it lists the one, two, three, four, five that, that are currently still getting that money under your contract. And then I would recommend we change the language, if the board pleases, to say if other, if, if other provided, if other providers will be added to the list, if needed, other providers will be added to the list upon approval of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. Because I think what that would do is mean that you would go through this process, this RFA, it would go to the Public Safety Coordinating Council for their recommendation, but ultimately it would come to this board for final approval. If that's what this board wants, that's how I would recommend that language be changed if it's agreeable.
It would make, very much enhance the support of this
And, and that's how the language used to read. That's why I wanted to have this discussion because I just wanted the board and Southeast Behavioral to make this decision about how new funding would be approved. And if we have this language, it would be, it would come to this board for final approval.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
I think everybody is right in what they're saying about this because if I remember, Dylan started this process and then Bill DeBrol kind of took it over. She was right. I think John was right in saying, we were ready, we were going to lose the money if we didn't. There were some issues. We turned to them and they, they helped us out. But then part of that discussion, if I remember, was exactly what Commissioner Adams said, that we had this discussion that basically is it would run like CSAC, TDC, that the, that the, the public, the board, the community, what is the, the board you said?
Public Safety Council.
Thank you, Public Safety Board, was to make the decision and it was supposed to come to the board. I just don't know if that ever got done or got put in writing because we were in a hurry to get the money taken care of, to figure out where it was going and get with Southeast Behavioral to make it happen on the initial. This is new money, this is some other stuff. So I, I don't, if I remember, I don't want anybody to think that anything was done wrong or that somebody was stepping out of their bounds. I just don't think it got done
No, no. We brought it back to
Right.
The board for
So, yeah, that's, so what you're saying, Counselor, to me, is what needs to be done? That way, that way it's clear.
And I think then we have more satisfied customers up on the dock.
Yes, the buck stops here. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's agreeable. I think that what our passage on that, we thought we were just saying, like, in the future, if anybody needs to be added to this, we're, we will be adding to that. But I don't think we meant it to, to read that we wouldn't get the approval before adding it.
And, and it was, it was a change that I noticed when I got this new amendment, so I just wanted to kind of flesh that out.
Can we also request the quarterly reports that we can disseminate to the board?
Sure.
Thank you.
The report was really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So we're making that appropriate change?
Yes. So you would be moving approval of this amendment to with that changed language in attachment B that I just read.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Second. So we have a motion in a second, Commissioner Adams and myself. Any further discussion? Captain?
I'm good, I'm good.
Good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Next item is a resolution authorizing capital improvement revenue bonds for the Sand Ridge Golf Club new clubhouse.
Mr. Chair.
Somebody at somebody's podium. Here you go.
I, I can kick this one off.
Thank you, Counselor.
So as you know, we, you have awarded the bid for the construction of your Sand Ridge Golf Course new clubhouse and you instructed staff to secure construction bond financing and that's what we've all been working on here at the county, together with your financial advisor, Mr. Joel Tindall, who's in the audience over there, and bond counsel, who is available remotely. I know Mr. Alex Fisher is available if the board had questions about that. But what's in front of you today is, this would be your last formal action on these bonds. This is the, actually, the resolution that authorizes the, the capital improvement revenue bonds being issued. Attached to that resolution is the details of how it's going to be offered to the public, all the, it will be sold by competitive sale, the disclosures, there's, there's a pretty thick packet here and, and all the details of how that bond financing would work. I, you know, obviously, there's experts here. If the board has questions about how the transaction will work, I know Mr. Zito put together, worked with budget, so you can see the budget impact and the, and how these bonds will be repaid. What you're basically doing here is coveting, covenoning to appropriate any non-ad valorem revenues necessary, but the intention is that the proceeds from the golf course will pay that bond payment because it looks like they're coming in pretty healthy. So the board, I, well, you know, I suggest you have, if you have questions for your experts here today, or if not, my recommendation is that you approve the, this resolution authorizing the Capital Improvement Revenue Bonds Series 2025.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions, Counselor?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Great presentation. Now, we're moving on to, well, it's Counselor's time. We're moving on to the special district boards and we're going to do solid waste disposal districts. Item 16B1 is approval for solid waste disposal district meeting minutes of June 17, 2025.
With approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 16B2 is the approval of solid waste disposal district meeting minutes of July 1, 2025.
With approval.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 16B3 is approval
With approval.
For the minutes of July 15, 2025. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 16B4, approval of solid waste disposal district special call meeting.
With approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And 16B5 is approval of solid waste disposal district meeting minutes of July 15, 2025.
Can we remove that at the beginning?
That's correct. Item 16B6 is work order number 24 by Kimberly Horn for solid waste disposal district annual financial reports.
Mr. Chair, this is always a fascinating read every year. I will be more than happy to move approval.
I thought you were going to read it.
Yeah. It's, it's the work order to do it. It's not done yet. I'm anticipating. The anticipation.
Thought you wanted to read it into record.
The whole financial report?
Why not?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And finally, 16B7 is the change order number two by CK Contractors and Development CK for automated scale lane project. Would, does Hamachi want to talk about it a little bit? Or we're good?
I'm happy to move approval, but you're also welcome to say something. It's much needed and I know a lot of the users of the landfill are anxiously awaiting the completion of that project, as I know you guys are too, because it'll make life easier.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, is there any member of the public that would comment on any non-agenda related items? Having given ample opportunity, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.